Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, March 28th. The time is 7:07. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen?
Present.
Commissioner Sims?
Here.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Vice Chair Korsak?
Present.
Chair Barnes?
Here. At this time, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of same. Do I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda submitted.
Motion from Commissioner Baker, second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Sims. Electronic vote. All votes have been cast. The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is the consent calendar, which has one item, approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion from Commissioner Sims. Second from Vice Chair Korsak. Yes, Ashley?
It's actually March 14th.
Oops, what did I say? Apologies.
I'll still approve them.
The minutes of March 14th.
I'll still make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it still.
Good. Makes it easy. Motion from Commissioner Sims, second from Vice Chair Korsak. Now we can vote. Apologies, sorry about that. Votes have been cast, and that carries seven to zero. Thank you. At this time, Community Development Director Sansamire has an item that he wants to insert into the agenda.
Is this on? It's on. Okay, wow. I don't have to do anything. We can do that. This evening, I'd like to invite our chairman down to join me in front of the public and his fellow commissioners, and I understand family members that are here tonight. So, as the Director of the Department of Community Development, it's been my pleasure to serve in a capacity where I get to work with a lot of the distinguished appointed officials for the city that help shape what's going on in our community currently and which will leave indelible marks on the community for many, many years to come. Commissioner Barnes is one of those individuals, and tonight, some of you that may not know, those that are watching from home, those that are here in attendance tonight, we want to announce that Commissioner Barnes, this is the end of his tenure at the city. He's been a commissioner for the last five years. This serves as his last meeting, and we just wanted to take a minute to really emphasize how important and the changes and the influences one person could have on a community. So we took a minute to just put those notes together. But the first thing, I've handed him a plaque, and on that plaque, it basically says, "The City of Moreno Valley is pleased to honor Jeffrey Barnes in recognition and appreciation for your five years of dedicated service. Your service and commitment contributed greatly to the successful growth and development of the City of Moreno Valley as a planning commissioner from January 28, 2014 through March 28th this evening, 2019." We're happy to do that again with your, I believe your wife and your mom are present.
Yes.
So I would be... We would be remiss not to recognize that the contribution he makes up here is also a sacrifice that he has that takes away time from his family, and so we appreciate the time that you have lent him to us to allow him to do the things that he's done for us. What influence can a commissioner have over five years? I've done this twice now. I've had two other outgoing commissioners, and it always amazes me when we just kind of look back at the record. We checked out the record, and first of all, Jeff is, I'm gonna put my glasses on because I can't read without the glasses, so apologize. So Jeff has been a respected member of the commission, and particularly recognized by his colleagues for his consistent, his thoughtful, and his thorough attention to the details for each project and other matters that have come before him on the commission. That's just been very steady. Over the five years, he has worked side by side effectively with nine other commissioners. As they have changed in and as they've changed out, he has shown them the professional courtesy. He's taught them the ropes in some regards, and in some regards, he's learned the ropes from them, and that has made him to be a successful collaborator up here. He's earned the respect of his fellow commissioners so much that he was actually elected chairman of the commission twice, and is currently serving in that chairmanship role today. And I believe it's almost a two-year period that you've been as the chairman, and that's a good accomplishment. During your five years, we counted 178 particular items and projects that have come before you. Some of those 178 items that you have commented on, taken action on, include the Miller Jones mortuary and crematory on Sunnymead Boulevard, which is a very nice facility and has been built and is in operation today. The 60th corridor study, there was a corridor study that we did to try and evaluate what land use changes we might want to look at. So sometimes we're looking at long-range planning, sometimes we're looking at current planning, and he's collaborated on things like that. Tonight, you heard, if somebody that may have arrived early, there was a presentation on a nascent corridor study. We're in the second phase of that, but Commissioner Barnes was part of the first phase as well. We've done some comprehensive updates to our development code. Some actual projects, the corridor project, which is at the corner of Eucalyptus and Day Street, which has the Marriott Residence Hotel, the Holiday Inn Suites, a service station, and multiple retail pads, which is under construction and is going to make a significant economic contribution to the city, were things, one of the key projects that has come before this commission. Tonight, we have some items on the agenda that are dealing with commercial cannabis. Commissioner Barnes was right there at the front and center when we put the ordinance Residential projects, Oak Park Apartment Project, which is currently under construction on Box Springs in the northwest corner of the city. Nova Homes, which is a 121-unit development that was approved, hasn't yet been built. He was here for that. Beezer Tract, which is over across the street from Stone Ridge, which is currently under construction and is reshaping that area of the city. Continental East, the apartment project that recently came before him. Before that, I believe it was Renaissance Village that Continental East did, and you might have been sitting on the commission when that was coming through. Industrial development, the city has recognized, and the whole Inland Empire is recognized for the amount of industrial development that takes place here. Prologis Development, just east of the Auto Center, about 1.5 million square feet. You've seen that under construction, the road improvements that go along with that. All of that stuff is making a significant contribution to the economic success of the city. Another prologis development in the south industrial area, I think it was about 1.7 million square feet, came before us very recently, and that one is also getting ready to start construction. A 1.4 million square foot First Nandina Project in the south industrial area. The Moreno Valley Modular Logistics Center, another 1.1 million square feet. The World Logistics Center, some of the people who are in the room here will remember that. Lots of meetings that we went through, and Chair Barnes was very professional and very diligent in his consideration of that project. Brodeia Business Center, the PAMA Business Center, which recently came here, which hopefully we see that under construction just down on Alessandro. Many wireless cell towers. The Walmart on Paris Invention, which we hope will be coming forward at some point. The Les Schwab Tire Store, some of you guys may go there and get your tires changed. That was approved, has been constructed, and has been built, and is a significant contribution to that area of the city. The Fairfield Inn, another hotel project. The municipal code amendments, when we had to address changes that happened at the state, there was accessory dwelling unit legislation, which is secondary homes. He was here for those. We had a lot of input on the Moreno Valley Ranch Golf Course and the apartment project that's going to be coming there. Some of you that may live around that area may have seen the grading and improvements of the golf course. We hope that that opens soon, but there was a lot of input and consideration that had to go through the commission and then the city council on that project as well. Those are some of the things I just wanted to highlight. Those things that have been approved, those things that have been constructed are not going to be gone tomorrow. They're going to be here for the long haul, and we want to thank you for those contributions and the difference you've made in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give you a second to say what you want, and we're gonna take some pictures, and you're welcome to bring your wife and mom up if you want to have some pictures taken.
Sure, you want your picture taken, dear? Come on, don't be shy. Anyway, thank you, Rick. I really appreciate that. Very kind words. I've thoroughly enjoyed this time on the commission, and I recommend it to anybody who has an interest, get involved. It's been a thoroughly enjoyable event, and I want to thank the staff for putting up with the fact that I didn't know anything when I started. Fellow commissioners, thank you very much. Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Sims, who were here when I got here, showed me the ropes, because it is, it's quite intimidating the first time you get up here and actually have to say something in public if you're not used to doing it, which I wasn't. But anyone who has an interest in getting involved, stick your neck out and take the challenge, because it's very rewarding, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my wife for allowing me the time to make site visits and study and attend meetings. Couldn't have happened without her. So with that, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We can put pictures of you, and if you want to take pictures with the commissioners real quick, we can do that.
Of course. Thank you, Rick. That was very kind. I appreciate it. But now to the work at hand. At this time on the agenda, the public comment section of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. Anyone wish to speak, please fill out a green speaker slip. They're available on the corner there. And I see lots of interested parties in the audience, so please limit your time to three minutes. I'll be enforcing it diligently. So with that...
Yeah.
Right. I've never used this, so let's not have tonight be the first night. All right, we only have one speaker on the list, I see. Roy Blackert. Wow.
Well, Mr. Barnes, maybe we'll test out if you can use that hammer. But congratulations on your service. You've represented yourself in the city well in your tenure as a planning commissioner, and I hope you have future success in the future in whatever endeavors you're doing. But I'm sure you enjoyed, maybe not so much sometimes, because sometimes you gotta listen to people like me coming up here and, you know, expressing opinions that, but it's all fun and good, and we're all looking for one thing, I think, is to build a better and stronger Moreno Valley. One of the things that I would like to comment on items on the agenda, and it's something you ask about, and I addressed from this planning commission before, and I hope you got an answer to the question, because it kind of seems to be in play, but what about the general plan amendment? I mean, you heard a laundry list of projects coming in, World Logistics Center, you have a lot of items on the agenda, cannabis, lot of businesses have been brought in here, lot of changes have been made to our land use, but we have not updated our general plan in 12 years. And I think if we would really be on that and focus on that, and we should have had it done, I think we had a plan to do it, at least I proposed one, it would streamline getting projects like you're gonna see coming up here later on. And some of the projects that have been delayed, one of them was the Winchell's Donuts and Gas Station that was delayed five years because they had to go through an arduous process. If we had had a general plan amendment done, we could fix a lot of these things and really make our community much more business-friendly. Make it where developers want to come in here, because they can see, okay, things have already been done, it's going to cost us less, we're going to get through the process more. And lord knows, California has been, specifically, has been, you know, not the greatest environment to develop projects. They take forever, businesses are moving out, opportunities are gone, and even though we have passed a lot of projects, a lot of things have not been done. One thing that did come before you was the hillside ordinance to put executive housing in. I was talking to City Council Member Carrera here recently. He didn't even know anything about it. So as the other members are going to be on the commission going forward, I hope you will concentrate especially on those two items, because I think if we did put a general plan amendment in, and we did do a hillside ordinance to open up those development opportunities, Moreno Valley would be better and stronger for it.
Seeing no other speakers on the list, we will move to the non-public hearing items. Oh, excuse me, there are none. Public hearing items, the first case, P E N 18-0191, a general plan amendment, 0192, a change of zone, 0254, a plot plan, and 0193, an amendment, an addendum to the EIR, pardon me. Applicant is Highland Fairview, and do we have staff report?
We do. The first item, a development proposal by Highland Fairview will be presented to you by case planner Jeff Swak.
Thank you.
Chairman Barnes, good evening. Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jeff Swak. I'd like to congratulate you, Chairman Barnes, on your years of public service. And I'm here tonight to present the Highland Fairview Corporate Park Project Phase Two. To give you a summary of the application, we have four general parts. First of all, is a plot plan to allow the development of 768,000 square-foot industrial logistics building. This will be constructed to the west of the existing 1,820,000 square-foot Skechers Building. The site is 36.8 acres. Second part is a general plan amendment, as mentioned, and a change of zone on approximately 19.7 acres of the 36.8 acre site. So just a portion of it. We're wanting to get your input on changing the general plan and zone. And then thirdly, we're requesting that we change the text of the general plan itself in two chapters, Chapter Five, which is the circulation element, and Chapter Nine, which are goals and objectives of the general plan. And this is to allow new, the consideration of new innovative right-of-way design solutions. And then finally, we're requesting your recommendation to city council to adopt an addendum to the EIR that was certified by the city council back in 2009. So in front of you is an aerial, shows you the project site. The project, the area we're looking at for development is outlined in red. There are two parcels per the parcel map. Parcel Two is the one that's closest to the Skechers Building, and then Parcel Three is further west on the northeast corner of Redlands Boulevard and Eucalyptus. The site is bounded on the north by State Route 60, to the east by World Logistics Center Parkway, on the south by Eucalyptus, and on the west side by Redlands Boulevard. And as you can see on the aerial in front of you, the Skechers Building does exist. It is to the east of the site, but on the far eastern edge of the Skechers Building is Parcel Four, and that's for a future development of up to 80,000 square feet of commercial. And that's the northwest corner of World Logistics Center Parkway and Eucalyptus. So in looking at this aerial, you'll notice that to the north, it's vacant, but the land, the designations for that area north of State Route 60 include office and commercial zoning. To the west, on the west side of Eucalyptus, there is approximately 15.7 acres, which is vacant and designated as future commercial. And to the west of that, not shown on this aerial, is the location of the Aldi Distribution Warehouse. And then to the south of the overall project site is the World Logistics Center specific planned area, which is undeveloped, and you will see future industrial development to that property. As you can see, in the bottom left-hand corner of this aerial, you do have residential development. That's on the west side of Redlands Boulevard. Gone through these items, what I'd like to do is identify that here is the site plan, and we're looking at the existing general plan and zoning. Originally, what was approved back in 2009 consisted of three phases. Phase One was what's existing, that's the Skechers Building, 1,820,000 square feet. Phase Two is a combination of a 600,000 square-foot industrial building, which would be immediately to the west of the existing Skechers Building, on what's identified on this plan as Parcel Two. And then part of Phase Two, the second part, would be the development of 80,000 square feet of commercial, on what is shown on red on the far right-hand side at World Logistics Parkway and Eucalyptus, as 80,000 square feet of future commercial. We contrast that to what's being looked at tonight. You have the Skechers Building. What's being proposed is development of 768,000 industrial logistics building, and that would be in a combination of Parcels Two and Three. And then the future development at the far eastern edge of the 80,000 square-foot commercial. So what isn't being proposed, what's being replaced, is the 120,000 square feet of retail commercial that would be at the northeast corner of Redlands and Eucalyptus. Instead of that, that area is shown on this as a rectangle in red. The general plan designation for that area, because it was originally looked at as commercial, so the general plan designation is commercial. The zoning designation for that is community commercial, and the intent is to change that red rectangle on the far left, so that it looks like this, so that you will have a designation of the general plan of business park, and then the implementing zoning of light industrial, so that that entire west side, outlined in black, would be available for development of the 768,000 square-foot industrial logistics building, and that will be an expansion to the Skechers. Skechers Building, as you know, is a positive tenant to the city. It generates sales tax, property tax to the city, and when you have a development such as what's being proposed, the developer puts in the public infrastructure in the right-of-way. Property generates property tax to the city, potentially sales tax and jobs. So I mentioned the general plan and land use designation changes. The second part of the general plan, as I mentioned before, is a text change. In Chapter Five, which is the circulation element of the general plan, and in the Goals and Objectives section, Chapter Nine, the staff report outlines reasons for looking at adding language that allows the city to consider different innovative designs in the right-of-way. And I'll get to why in a moment. So the language is shown on the bottom of this slide. That would be added to Section 5.1 of the circulation element, and then added as a new section under Goals and Objectives as 5.5.12, and it will allow the city staff to consider innovative design and program solutions to improve the mobility, efficiency, connectivity, and safety of the transportation system. The first sentence is very key, because there are opportunities. And not only will this, if the planning commission recommends to city council to consider this favorably, and the council approves this language addition to the general plan, not only would it be available for consideration for this project, but also for other projects throughout the city. And this has been vetted through staff as well. So some of the designs that are identified here would be traffic calling devices, roundabouts, traffic circles, and because of the, especially the roundabout consideration, that is the tie-in to what's being looked at currently by the Highland Fairview project that's before you tonight. So in looking at the site plan, and I apologize, there's a lot of information here, if you look at the bottom left-hand corner, the intersection of Redlands Boulevard and Eucalyptus, there is a proposal for a modern traffic roundabout. And that would tie into this general plan amendment text change whereby it could be considered. Right now, in the general plan, you could make the case that this could be considered, but it's better to have it be specific, is what in the general plan, some of the ideas and improvements in the right-of-way that could make traffic, in this case, improve air quality, reduce greenhouse gas, makes it safer, a roundabout, cheaper for the city ultimately to operate, because you don't have traffic signals that you have to replace and maintain. So tonight, we do have the applicant with his consultants that can answer questions on the roundabout, as well as our staff in engineering, in public works in transportation that can help with the reasons why a roundabout is worth considering, and we do have conditions of approval that address the phasing of roundabouts, how that will be developed over time. So in addition to the roundabout at Eucalyptus and Redlands, there is also one proposed further west on Eucalyptus Avenue at the main entrance to the proposed project. Small roundabout at the main entrance, and then between the two roundabouts, there is ingress and egress to Eucalyptus Avenue. As you can tell, in Eucalyptus Avenue, there is a raised median that is a continuation of what you see further east in front of the Skechers Building. That is to control traffic, truck traffic. That is to add beauty to that arterial, or that arterial. Improvements, if you look at the site plan, on the private property itself, the large beige color is the footprint of the proposed 768,000-built, 768,000-square-foot structure. To the north and to the south, you see large white areas. That is where the truck docks will be. On the north side, call, there is a grade change. The way is approximately 20 to 30 feet higher in elevation than this site, so that will help the building kind of mask, the masking of the building and screen the docks. On the south side, the docks, there are equally, almost as many on the south side facing Eucalyptus, but those will be behind a 12-foot-high decorative wall and landscaping, so you will not be able to see the docks from the public right-of-way. Also included in Euclid Avenue, in addition to the median that I mentioned, there is a right-of-way that's been dedicated for a multi- a right-of-way that's been dedicated for a multi-use trail, a 10-foot-wide trail that will be placed south of the sidewalk. Then along Redlands Boulevard, on the east side, there's a, there is a 10-foot-wide Class One bicycle route. On the property itself, I've mentioned the building, there is a 30-foot-wide fire access that surrounds the building, so emergency vehicles can access that. See the blue rectangle in the southwest portion of the site plan? That is for a design feature, a water feature, that will help improve the look of that important entrance, which is Redlands Boulevard and Eucalyptus Avenue. The green identifies future landscaping, but we have conceptual landscape plans tonight. We do not have final landscape plans. Those will be developed over time, and we do have conditions of approval that require the applicant to provide landscaping. But just to summarize on the site, looking at a building that's set back quite a distance both from Redlands and Eucalyptus Avenue, the height of the building will be 55 feet. You have 74 truck-loading docks, both on the north and south side. And the parking that's provided both, the parking that's provided for employee handicap accessibility vans, as well as truck trailers and bicycle parking, does meet the requirements of the Moreno Valley Municipal Code. Elevations, what will the building look like? There are four elevations shown. To the top of the, the first elevation on the top is the north elevation facing the freeway. And if you focus on the elevation to the south, that is the elevation that faces Redlands Boulevard. So you have a 55-foot-tall building. It's, it will be a concrete tilt-up. It will be very compatible to the Skechers building to the east. You see on the right-hand side of the elevation on the south, a black rectangle, that's glass. And remember, we're talking about almost 40, 45 feet high. And then in that section is a two-story glass office building that will jut into the design feature, which is a water feature, and perhaps there'll be statues or some sort of additional improvements in that area, and quite a bit of landscaping to really improve the corner of Redlands and Eucalyptus. Quite an elegant design. The other elevations, the second elevation from the top is the south elevation facing Eucalyptus, showing not only the color of the building, but the striations on it to give movement. There will be metal louvers added, so you have glass, you have concrete, metal landscaping to really break up the way the building looks. In addition to this project, as I mentioned, the fourth item that's being requested involves the CEQA process. And what we're doing is asking that the planning commission recommend to city council that an addendum to the EIR that was originally certified back in 2009 by the city council be approved. That the, and the reason that CEQA allows that to occur only if the project, the changes to the project, what's being presented, and that what was approved back in 2009, the changes are very minor. And in addition, that what's being proposed will not result in any new impacts, or that the previously addressed impacts that were part of the environmental impact report certified in 2009, that this project will not be more significant as far as the impacts that it will have to the original environmental impact report. So the document that you have, that's approximately an inch and a half thick in your binder, is the addendum to the EIR. And what that does is goes through and takes all of the items that were analyzed originally back in 2009. It's 10 years old. And then in addition, the applicant hired consultants and did a series of analysis and studies and memorandum that are part of the addendum that were done in October, November of 2018. So were done recently to update this information to today. So you can, in the addendum, it states what the impacts will be for the proposed project. Studies that were done and updated include air quality, which is very important, greenhouse gas emissions, not only what was analyzed originally, but what's out there today, what the cumulative impacts are for what's existing and what's changed in 10 years. In addition, biological resources have been studied, so that would be the plants and animals on site. Cultural resources, which is dealing with Native Americans, especially under state law, it's called SB 18, which requires cities to consult with the local Native American tribal representatives to protect cultural resources. And so we've, that has been done. And then transportation and traffic. What are the current traffic studies? What does Skechers currently generate for trips? Based and compare that to what was originally analyzed 10 years ago. So the bottom line of what the consultants are recommending in the addendum to the EIR is the proposed project has far less impact than what was analyzed back in 2009, even with the new studies that are part of the addendum that were presented to you for your review and recreational reading over the weekend. In addition, this is a, this project has many different parts. It's complicated. There are a lot of, there is a lot of information that was presented to the planning commission, and I have provided some information to you, and particularly, one is a memo that stated that identifies four areas that we're recommending some changes from what was originally put in your packet. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes and go through that with your concurrence. Memorandum identifies, there are generally three conditions of approval that were part of the resolution for the plot plan, that we're asking for some minor changes to, some refinements. And that would be condition of approval number 75, number 176, and number 182. So on this document, it shows the new language for 70, condition number 75. That deals with off-site easements for the, in particular, if you'd be doing, having a roundabout, the need for acquiring, and then also a reimbursement, if that's necessary, reimbursement agreement associated with right-of-way easements. Condition number 176 deals with traffic roundabouts, just adding some language that part of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the project roundabouts, or other traffic control measures is approved by the city engineer. If they choose not to do roundabouts, perhaps go back to a more standard signalized intersection, this language reflects that ability to choose. And then condition number 182, originally, it was tied to recordation of a final parcel map, but there is no map associated with this action. There was a map originally, and to join the two parcels, parcels two and three together, that will be done subsequently by a lotline adjustment. So the language just reflects the fact that there will not be a parcel map added. Number two, you received as part of the addendum, there was appendix F, which is supplemental traffic memo. There are two very small changes that the consultant has recommended, almost typographical errors that do not change the conclusions, nor have any greater effect to the project. They just changed the traffic counts, and our consultant can go over that if you have questions. Number three, we had our consultation with both the Rincon tribe, Rincom Native American representative, as well as Suboba, and they requested that, since the mitigation measures that were included back in 2009 are 10 years old, and the city Moreno Valley is very progressive and has a very good track record in dealing with local Native Americans, that they wanted the mitigation measures to be modified to further clarify their role in doing onsite monitoring, along with the archaeologist that's hired and the developer. And so that's the reason that we've asked for some changes to mitigation measures. Finally, there was a request, and it has been reviewed not only by the applicant's attorney, but by the city attorney's office as well. The addenda, I'm sorry, the resolution requesting that the EIR addendum be approved ultimately by the city council. They're requesting, based on recent court case, that that language in the resolution be changed, and that they add the ability to re-adopt what's called the statement of overriding considerations. That was adopted back and certified in the final environmental impact report back in 2009. So they're not adding any new statement of overriding considerations, the same five are part of this. They're just requesting that they be re-adopted as part of this action. So that's almost like a business item. So you have the items in front of you in that packet. In addition, we've provided you with all the correspondence that staff has received for this project. Most everyone, in fact, all of these have been email correspondence, and if the applicant, if the draft, person that drafted the correspondence asks that it go to planning commission, we have included that for you. There are 12 different pieces of correspondence. Eight of the correspondence are against the project, two are in favor, and one letter is neutral, does not take a position, but brings forth some items or questions that are very valid. They talked about the multi-use trail, which I mentioned, that that needs to be built as part of this project. That is conditioned to be built as part of this project, both on Eucalyptus and Redlands Boulevard. There's also, they're asking that there needs to be more comprehensive landscape improvement plans added. We agree. What's shown in this packet are conceptual landscape plans, but we have no fewer than four conditions of approval that require the applicants to submit detailed landscape plans and irrigation, and have those approved by the appropriate staff. In closing, I am confident that the proposed project, as it's conditioned, and we do have conditions that tie it back to the original conditions of approval, meet the requirements of the settlement agreement that was, that the city Moreno Valley was party to, as well as Highland Fairview and the Sierra Club. So with that, there's a lot of information. We do have the applicant and his consultants here. You do have staff present. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Would you guys like to ask questions of the staff, or you want to hear from the applicant and then ask questions? Any thoughts? Yeah. Would the applicant like to add anything to the report? Please come forward.
Good evening, Edo Benzivi. I want to first congratulate you for your service here on the commission and for the many nights, and I know untold hours of your review and diligent work on the World Logistics Center application and other approval. We're here tonight actually excited about an expansion of a company that we brought to town a few years back, and, which is exactly what we hope will happen, bring good companies to town, that will then flourish and continue to grow and expand within our own cities and not go to other cities. So tonight, the application really reflects the demand by Skechers, who is being our city now a tenant for quite a while, and has tremendously added to our community, both in their presence, but also economically and financially. You know, it's been almost eight, nine years. Property tax alone is about 1.6, 1.7 million dollars a year. It's close to $10 million of taxes that have already been contributed for the building, untold amounts in sales tax from the store and so forth. This building will continue the Skechers operation. It will also run off the two parcels that are west of the building, all the way to Redlands Boulevard as described. And I think staff has really done an excellent job in describing all the issues. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Wow. Amazing.
Well, I do have. I would like to say, as an added comment about the contribution to Moreno Valley, especially of Skechers, is that I asked the executives today a question that's been around for a long time, which is how many Moreno Valley residents actually work at the Skechers facility? And I don't have the exact number, but they said it's well in excess of 400 Moreno Valley residents actually work at that plant in Moreno Valley. So there's lots of people from Moreno Valley that actually work at the Skechers facility today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benzivi. Commissioner Sims.
Mine is more about the roundabout stuff.
Me too. Go ahead.
So on the, I live very close, I live very close to this area, and so I have to experience the Redlands at the 60 morning traffic and evening traffic and whatnot. So I just, I am curious about how the roundabout would work in the absence of the redo of the interchange there, whenever that is, is going to be taken upon. So would it, would the plan be, and I like roundabouts, I, you know, I was just in Arizona this last week, and, you know, they have those in different areas, and they work good. But in the absence, if this, if this project goes prior to the freeway work being done, would, would, would a more traditional intersection be first built at Eucalyptus and Redlands? But there'd be a reservation for the space for the roundabout? Or how, how do you guys, from a technical standpoint? Is there sufficient queuing for the, for the way the ramps are set up? Because usually in the morning, you can't get, because of the traffic, it's usually, it's kind of a combination of the traffic on both sides of the freeway, where it just, cars are just stacked, stacked, it's not even the trucks, it's mainly just cars are all stacked up on that, trying to move in and out of the freeway there. So anyhow, that's kind of a rambling question, but I guess the main thing is, is the roundabout something that could be implemented with initially, prior to the freeway work being done? Or if not, would there be a traditional intersection with a stoplight and then reservation to build a roundabout later?
Good evening, Eric Lewis, city traffic engineer. So the developer has proposed a roundabout at this location. It's proposed to be an interim roundabout, single lane, until it's needed to be double in the future. Based on analysis and known safety benefits, the roundabout will, will function as well or better as the signal, so it is acceptable to the city. And it will function well with the existing signals.
I guess, I guess my experience with going around abouts, it never stops, so, but it could stop if there's not movement across, you know, going north over the bridge in the morning, because there's a stoplight, and there isn't a round, there won't be a roundabout on the north side of the freeway. So it just seems like it'd be kind of a cluster. If you got clustered into the roundabout, you're stuck. You know? So that would, that's just, I, I'm sure, I'm not a traffic engineer, so if, I suppose if it.
Well, I can, I can tell you that spacing between intersections, a roundabout is, placement is based on a technical term, 95th percentile queue. And so as long as that queue does not block the exit of the roundabout, then it can be within that distance. But the consultant has analyzed the queuing that's going to go there, and it, it won't spill back into the roundabout.
We actually looked at that to some extent, to see if it would work or not, primarily for several reasons. One is, it's really a more advanced traffic tool, management tool in terms of transportation. A lot of places around the world use it. I'm sure those of you have traveled to Europe and other places where congestion is multiple of how bad we think it is really here. That is both a safety feature, because there's a lot less collisions and accidents that result from a roundabout intersection, as well, it provides another additional potential benefit. And that is, we now have projects like Aldi and Prologis, they may come out, or the Redlands. From our side, we have agreed that none of the traffic coming from our building, particularly the, the truck traffic, not the general population traffic, but the trucks, will only use World Logistics Center Parkway, what we know as Theodore. So we're really not adding trucks to Redlands. However, when trucks do come down Redlands, and for some reason, they miss the interchange or, you know, thought they need to go to Aldi or didn't, the only way for them to turn around would be to cross Eucalyptus on south on Redlands and find some residential neighborhood to make a U-turn, which would not be ideal or good. A roundabout enables them to go right through and get back right on the freeway without having to go down, look for a location to, to turn. And we looked at the queuing, we looked at the conditions, the present condition, even though it doesn't affect our truck traffic, because we are all going to direct it to Theodore, World Logistics Center. We do think that it's sort of an advanced tool, and I know in the city strategic, is it plan or strategic initiatives, one of them was to thoroughly explore the use of roundabouts. So we thought we'll also comply with that strategic element in the general plan, to at least try to comply with it, and we think it will work.
All right. Any other questions? A quick one on roundabouts. There's multiple references to call it a modern roundabout. Is, what differentiates that from an antique roundabout? Is it something different that we haven't seen in other areas?
Well, the, the first roundabout was actually a rotary or a traffic circle, and then with new design, the, which is basically yield to the left versus yield to the, to the, on the entering traffic, became a modern roundabout. So there's a distinction between a rotary, traffic circle, and a modern roundabout. So I'm sure that answers your question, but...
Yeah, it does actually differentiate between the two. Okay. Thank you.
I have one more.
Commissioner?
One of staff, I think just for, you know, the, part of this, part of this discussion will be about the validity that the, to approve an amendment to the, to the, to the SEQA document. And so I would like, just for the record, so people listening at home, and also I hear, kind of walk us through, walk, from a, from a technical standpoint, the change in the transportation between the 2008 or 2009 projections for the Highland, the Highland Fairview Corporate Park, EIR, to the actuals, and then, and also the relationship that you have, I forget what table it is, the discussion on the current ITE projections. I, I think those are pretty, if, if there's a case to be made about the, about the less impact, because that kind of goes in hand with the air quality, too. If you have less traffic volume, then you're, you have the, less, think less air pollution. So if somebody could do that, that, I think that would be very helpful.
If you want, I can tee off as far as the beginning, what we're looking at with the addendum. So they looked at what was proposed, as I mentioned, back in 2009, as you've stated, which identified a different product. So tonight, they're looking at eliminating the 120,000 square feet of commercial, and the 120,000 square feet of commercial, they looked at what that would generate back in 2009, potentially, as far as traffic circulation impacts. And the EIR was based on a baseline of information for a 600,000 square foot industrial logistics building, and then 80,000 square feet of retail, along with the 1,820,000 square foot Skechers building that is currently built. So that's the baseline of information studied back 10 years ago, as you know. The ability the addendum is stating, and we can have our consultants talk about the details and the trip generation based on the ITE standards, they're looking at, how do you compare a 768,000 square foot logistics industrial building with no 120,000 square feet of commercial retail being built at Redlands and Eucalyptus? What's the difference? And the beauty is, they have the building, they have the traffic that's generated by the existing Skechers. So not only did they look at what was identified in the original Environmental Impact Report for traffic generation, what they're projecting, but they can look at what is actually projected, what is actually generated today by the Skechers building. So with that, perhaps we can have our applicant's consultant, or if Public Works Traffic wants to add to that, we certainly can, but to drill down to the information that you're asking, what did they actually look at? And how is this project, from a traffic and circulation perspective, less of an impact than what was originally looked at in 2009? Because that's...
If I may...
If I may, actually, if I may, our traffic engineer can answer the question, and then we'll...
Oh, sure. I, I did prepare a graph that actually compares the two, and you can actually see them in comparison, if you'd like to, they'll have set up.
I think that, I think that's very helpful to...
Yeah.
I don't know, we move along, there's, I don't have any way to, that, how I'm... Oh, I don't know exactly which slide it is, it's somewhere in traffic, if you continue going.
Maybe you could give us the answer, Eric, and then we'll see if it matches the chart.
Yeah. You'll see a traffic, you'll see a headline traffic. Yeah. So, this is the corporate park, the Highland Fairview Corporate Park, TIA, compared to the new condition, the new project. So the TIA, the original EIR, as you describe it, for the Highland Fairview Corporate Park, indicated 7,614 movements. The new project, which means the new building, the new expansion Skechers building, what we're considering tonight, is actually 1,120. If you click one more time. Work, yeah, which is about a 65% reduction in actual traffic. We go to the next one. But out of that 7,600 movements, 4,100 in the original EIR were trucks. The actual number now is six or five, which is also about a 65% reduction. So overall, compared to the original EIR, the projected EIR numbers to the actual EIR that we have done, the supplemental EIR that's in front of you tonight, there's a 65% reduction in traffic. However, this is based on the TIA, ITE. The actual numbers are quite different, if you don't mind going to the next slide. So, this is how many movements was attributed to the original. The Skechers Phase 1 was attributed 1,669, which is a 45% reduction. Out of this 3,000 movements, 1,600 were projected to be trucks out of Skechers. The actual number is 334, which is, you know, a substantial 80% reduction. And there's several elements about traffic. It isn't just the numbers, but traffic is more about pattern than it is about number. And if we have, you know, 10,000 cars heading up Gilman Spring Garden going east, it really doesn't impact our traffic in Moreno Valley, but if 10,000 car gone up on the west, on the 60, and headed westbound in the morning at the peak rush hours, AM and PM, it will impact our traffic. So it's more about pattern. I do have a graph to show you what, what is really happening, and that is that the traffic is distributed pretty evenly over a 24-hour period. Most of the traffic is off-peak, and so there's approximately, out of these trucks, about seven trucks that operate during what you and I would consider peak rush hour traffic in the morning. And that's why the general sense in Moreno Valley is that they never see any trucks servicing Skechers. There are, there's about 334 of them over a 24-hour period, most of them at night, which is not unique to Skechers, it's really typical of the industry.
Thank you. You want to roll? Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, I'm on a roll. So this is to staff, so the other, so we're looking at the General Plan Amendment proposes to change 120,000 square feet of commercial, commercial use into a business park, if I've got this right.
That is correct.
So on the, to put it in perspective, what is, on the Stone Ridge, which is close to Stone Ridge Development, which is close, and then also the, I don't know where, the Walmart Supercenter, if that's, there's still vacant parcels at that. Is there any kind of sense of how much vacant space is built at Stone Ridge, or empty space, building space at Stone Ridge? And how much still empty pad space is at Stone Ridge and the Walmart? I mean, relatively speaking, it, it seems like, why add more commercial retail and stuff when we have vacant in that area of the, of the city already? So is there any kind of sense on that?
There, there is, there are vacant pad sites at Stone Ridge. I would say about 20% or so are vacant right now. Also, it's kind of been underperforming, although things are coming back a little bit there. With regard to the Walmart, Walmart site, that center, there's really no vacant pads that are commercial there. There is, however, vacant commercial zone property immediately west of this site, which is, I believe, in the order of 20 acres, 19 acres. So there's a lot of vacant commercial property immediately proximate to this site.
Just to emphasize a little bit on the, at the Stone Ridge Center, the Hyundai dealership that was recently built there, there's still a very large parcel to the west of that between the existing buildings and the Hyundai dealership, which is left to be built. And the pads that we're talking about that are, are still not developed are on the perimeter of the entire Stone Ridge site, as you get up close to the perimeter road. And so if you drove through, you would see that there would be future pads that could still be built. I just wanted to give you a visual.
There's also about 17, 18 acres of additional retail within the World Logistics Center project site area. And there's also more retail north of the 60 freeway at Redlands, when you go to the north corners. Overall, I don't have to describe to any of us that live here in town, that there's perhaps more retail than there is demand. And the whole idea of the World Logistics Center with the connection through Eucalyptus was to drive a lot of daytime employment over to our shopping center, and hopefully help them with more business, so they can lease up, or at least those who are there who are struggling, maybe show up their businesses a little bit.
Anyone else?
I do have one more.
Oh, for gosh sakes. Go ahead.
But on, on this, this Condition Number 75A, that you're on the, this thing that you handed out to the DICE, how does this, so when you, when the off-site, when it's, it's talking about a reimbursement agreement for costs off-site street improvements, I mean, in general, what would that be? Would it be, is the developer responsible for the center line of Eucalyptus going north? Or, you know, how does that, is that, what's typically, what would be off-site to this, not exactly specific, but what would be an off-site for street improvement?
Good evening, Commissioners Michael Lloyd with Public Works Land Development. So there's a couple of opportunities through our code that allow for reimbursements or credits. One through is our, through our DIF program, our Development Impact Fee Program, that allows for credits. There's also an opportunity for any type of improvements that aren't covered by that program, to allow reimbursement to developers. And it's typically improvements where they're providing additional capacity above and beyond what their project needs, so that the surrounding community gets some sort of benefit. And so the developer has an opportunity to enter into an agreement with the city, and the city would therefore move forward when future projects come in for approval. We would condition that those future projects provide some sort of reimbursement for those improvements provided.
On a, and thank you for that. Then the, for my, my old work, we, you would do development reimbursement agreements with, with developers, but we would have a sunset, there would be a prescribed, agreed-upon time limit that, you know, 10 years, 15 years, whatever was agreed-upon time. If that was the, if the adjacent properties or benefiting properties that were in the area of benefit didn't come to fruition and paid into the, whatever the reimbursement amount was, the developer was out. Is that, is that typically, is there a sunset on the duration?
So any type of agreement that would be entered into, in this case, would be consistent with city policies. And so off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any sunsets per our current city policy.
If I can, we will confirm this, but I believe there's a provision there for 15 years, is what I recall. We can look at that, but I did want to emphasize what Mr. Lloyd just said, that the condition of approval that's in front of you is, is nothing different than what our code already allows. It's consistent with our municipal code and our reimbursement provisions that are already available. We're just, we're just codifying it, so just make sure that's clear.
Understood. Yeah, and typically, I mean, we would always look at, when my old work is, is that we would have a sunset just for the fact that you didn't want to reimburse for an age, anything, you know, 15 years, there is, it starts to get into useful life of an asset, why would you reimburse for a 25-year-old asset? Because then you're into replacement mode, so...
All right, thank you. Eric, did you agree with those traffic numbers?
Yes.
Okay. Just an observation, Skechers' operation is so robust that they require another 800,000 square feet of space, yet they're doing that with 65%, with 65% less truck activity. Operationally, and this, there's no judgment in this, how is that work, that you need all that extra space, and yet you're using way less trucks? Are they twice as long?
No, actually, if you remember from our long discussions on the World Logistics Center, and sort of my beef with the way SEQA and TIA works, you all know what the 95th percentile is. We assume the traffic generation numbers, I mean, the typical example is, you know, we all go to Target, we talk about the Stone Ridge Center. Every time you're there, there's 30 cashiers there, but you're always in line, because there's only three open. And you say, what's up with that? There's 30 cashiers and I'm always in line, mostly, I hear. People are familiar with that. Well, that's because the design target for the single highest peak, Christmas week, they need 30 cashiers, the rest of the year, they can probably use more than three, maybe five would be nice. But the point is, they designed it to the single highest peak, the same thing with parking lots and infrastructure. So what happens with, when you do a project like we did at Skechers, the traffic generation numbers are so disproportionate to the reality of the world, and I'd explained it back then. But because the way SEQA is, and the way it's practiced in the state, you get sued no matter what number, what reasonable number you will assign, somebody said, that's not good enough, and you should have gone to an extreme. So what we end up doing is going to the extreme, that no one can say there could possibly be more traffic, even though they said it anyways. So you end up with numbers that are highly exaggerated. I always advocated against it, because what happens, we, we end up putting up bigger streets that we need, and in the beginning, it sounds okay, because the developer puts it in, and we think, okay, the developer put it in. But what happens, it's public infrastructure, the street ends up being dedicated to the city. And we are all familiar with streets that have multiple lanes that are probably not needed, and then the city and the taxpayer have to repave them, maintain them, do, you know, a lot of things that otherwise wouldn't have caused. So if you look at Skechers, because of the original EIR, Eucalyptus Boulevard in front of Skechers is a four-lane divided with a median, four lanes. Eric, how much traffic can a four-lane divided, I think it's what, 25, 30,000 cars a day?
Typically about 9,000 cars per day, per lane is a plan number.
So about 40,000, 35 to 40,000, the capacity of the Eucalyptus in front of Skechers is 230 to 40,000 trips a day. We're dealing with 1,600. It's thousands of order magnitude in percent of more than's needed. But it is what it is, and, you know, what Einstein said once, if you keep on doing the same thing over and over again, expect a different result. It's a sign of insanity. There's some of it going on a little bit, and that's why we build all this huge infrastructure that sometimes is not needed. But in any event, no, the numbers they have indicate is the actual number it takes to operate the facility. It isn't those exaggerated numbers that everybody uses out of SEQA.
All right, thank you. That clears it up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just want to let you know, I looked at our municipal code. I misspoke on the 15 years. The 15 years is applicable to drainage improvements and interchange improvements. I have not found it specific to the type of conditions we're writing. So I just want to make sure the 15 years I was referring to was not...
Okay.
...specific to this.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have questions? No? All right, well then, let's move to the public comment portion of our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benzivi. Thank you, Mr. Benzivi. All right. All right, remember your time is limited to three minutes. A lot of people here tonight and lots of things to get through, so please adhere to that. The first speaker is Dinares Sanchez.
Good evening, planning commissioners, planning staff and residents. My name is Dinares Sanchez, and it is a pleasure for me to be at this meeting with you here tonight with the purpose of letting you know my petition in regard to this project. This new project of the expansion of Skechers, as you may know, will be very beneficial to our city. As we've seen before with the first Skecher building, this new project will bring tax revenue in its expansion. Expansion is a good thing for our city. It means growth and progress. It means that Moreno Valley is seen as a great city to do business in. Skecher has donated to many causes in Moreno Valley. Some of our favorite city events are annually supported by Skechers. This is why tonight I would like you, no, I would ask you to vote yes for this expansion. We are really excited to see more growth in Moreno Valley. I hope you will do the right thing and vote yes to the progress of this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Victor De Leon.
Good evening, planning commission member and everyone here in this salon. My name is Victor Roman de Leon. I am a member of this community for 20 years. And then I remember in 1999, when they started the first stone and Mr. Schussneger, Mr. Benzivi right there, Skecher was starting a new era in this country. Because in this country, it's the different brands, the famous brand, where he brings here the Skecher, is very nice support to the Moreno Valley City. And I remember in 19, 2009, starting the construction, every plan, the Skecher plan. But right now, I'm here for recognizing Mr. Iro, the labor, the new company in Moreno Valley. And I'm here because I approve, I support Mr. Iro for a new plan, the second phase. And I hope the best for Moreno Valley when the investment from Iro, because $2.3 billion is investment for the new era in Moreno Valley. It's a grand support for our city, our kids, our growing the city, and every, any many benefits for the community. I was a participant in a lot of projects in the street of Moreno Valley City, like clean the city, clean the street. And for Christmas, Iro give the turkeys for the people in support to the school with backpack or tennis shoes, and said again, "Thank you very much, Mr. Iro, for support to the community." And I said yes on the second face for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Santiago Hernandez.
Good evening, planning commissioners and the staff, the best staff in the country, in the county of Riverside. I'm here this evening to support the second phase of Skechers. Skechers are giving work for people of Moreno Valley residents. Skecher is a building, if you've not been there, you should have been there, because it's a building that is a friendly, environmental friendly, and energy efficient, water efficient. Many people from around the world are coming here to see how this building was built. So I'm here to support the second, I say, the second part is going to be on the west of the first part of Skechers. So it's going to be good for our city. I've been here more than one quarter of the century living here. I'm a business owner here in Moreno Valley. I know this city is going to be one of the greatest around the state, around the country, I mean, the county. And I hope you approve it, this project, because it's going to be very beneficial of the city and the residents of the Moreno Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next speaker is Tom Thornsley.
You know I don't like the project, but I'm not going to try to talk you out of it because there's no way that's going to happen. But let me give you a quick clarification, page 726, condition of approval number two. It references the wrong project for consistency of the conditions. It's referencing the project you're going to do after this one. So there's a typo on there. I believe it was probably supposed to say plot plan PA 070091. I brought that to staff's attention about midday today, they probably didn't catch it. You know, there's a lot of conditions of approval that relate to the original project. A lot of those still apply, a lot of those set in place what's supposed to come forward with this project. One of the biggest ones was the trails. Quite sad for me to see that the staff did not insist that the trail be shown on the plan with the landscaping. So you had an idea of how it would interface in that area from the curb to the walls where the trails would coordinate or merge at the intersection. There's nothing left there for the trail to be in. It goes to such a tight point in such a wide arc of the roundabout, which, by the way, roundabouts, I like them, they work. But nobody put together anything that would show us a great entry statement into this commercial center. If you go to either end of Frederick right here, this center here has beautiful entry statements here with a rock-raised bed, a whole row of trees. They used to have lights on them, I'm not sure I'll see tonight if they do. So you have none of that on this thing. You've got a very tight little spot, and it's a shame they didn't bring that to you to see it, so you also know what you're approving as opposed to it being something that's done, you know, in the back office with staff. So if nothing else, I would hope you guys could require them to bring that back to you for your blessing on there. One of the things I did ask, Commissioner Sims brought it up too about the roundabout, I drive that every day, and I've been jammed up on some days, that's really horrible. I didn't see anything in these documents that said Caltrans looked at this or considered it. This project and the addendum were just finished 10 days ago, and so the final review or sending this out to any other agencies would be hard to tell. Folks, there is no way to see what kind of time I've got here. There is no timer up here. Okay, anyway.
60 seconds.
How many?
60.
Okay, thank you. And you got a couple of other conditions. I don't recall the pages, but conditions 138 and conditions 139, they talk about everything from the curb inward to the site, but they are so complicated to read, you don't understand what they are, and if you add one of them up, what should be 37 feet of combined sections actually calcs out to be 53. So I really recommend that staff look at that and rewrite it so that it's read clearly. I don't think it's going to be a problem later, but I guess I'm a little picky about that stuff when I'm trying to in my mind picture what I don't see on the plan to understand what happens after the curb, a little parkway, a sidewalk, more landscape, a trail, more landscape. You know, I wanted to be able to see that picture, but it's not there to view. And that's all I'm going to be able to cover. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornsley. Next speaker, Lindsey Robinson.
Hi. Obviously, I'm not in favor of any more changes. He's had 10 years now to do Phase Two and Three, and bring in the 2,000 promised jobs, that has not happened. He said the trucks don't exit on Redlands, they're only exiting on Theodore, that is not a true statement. And the truck counts and car counts that Mr. Lewis said they've done should show that they are exiting on Redlands every single day. I have a concern about trails. The master plan trail has a trail planned across the freeway at Theodore and all the way down to Lake Paris. That wasn't shown on any of their maps. I know they've done away with the trail board, but that is still part of our master plan trail. Major concern, Mr. Harris. I think ethically, you need to recuse yourself from this vote as you are in a tight relationship with Mr. Benzivi as a member of his political action committees, as well as your activities on his behalf illegally blocking collection of signatures of folks who oppose his project, and that you financially benefited by your relationship with him and the mayor. Mr. DeJean, I can't say your last name, I apologize. You are a coworker of the mayor and did not originally apply for the planning commission, so I hope you will disclose if you've had any conversations about this project with the mayor. I just think he's had 10 years to finish Phase Two and Three and bring the jobs. The city has bent over backwards to accommodate all his other changes, whether it be Nason Street, Aquabella, the Rancho Balago signs, et cetera. I've sent an email, and you've seen a lot of my other issues. He has benefited on the public trough for too long, and there is laws against that that are being investigated. And I think he needs to uphold his agreements that he has signed with the city for all the infrastructure and for the retail and the business that he's promised us that he will bring. This is not doing, this is not keeping his word and keeping his promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Eunice Canny.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Eunice Kang, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I've lived in Moreno Valley for over 20 years. I fully support the changes that are on the table for the World Logistics Center to allow the expansion of Skechers in our community, and to allow other businesses to come and locate into our fine city. Skechers has been a good neighbor. They've not only provided us with a very nice retail outlet, but also they've given us jobs and revenue for our city. Jobs is much needed in our city. I used to commute 165 miles round trip a day to Century City, but now I'm a retired software engineer, and I don't need a job. But I empathize with the people in our city that do have to commute long distances to go to work. More jobs in our community means that more parents can spend more time with their children as they don't have to go so far. More entry-level jobs means that our young people will have something positive to do, and we won't have so much crime and vandalism. So I fully support the plans of the World Logistics Center to expand Skechers and to bring other companies into our community. Also, when Skechers is expanded, that will encourage other companies to come and locate too in our city. So I hope you all vote yes on this project.
Before I call the next speaker, I appreciate everyone's enthusiasm, but let's give everyone their three minutes uninterrupted. Everyone will have their time to speak, so let's keep the applause to a minimum, please. Next speaker is Sandra Murphy. Oh, I apologize. Maria Garcia.
My name is Sandra Murphy, and he asked me to ask you to call in advance, three persons at a time for them to be ready. Okay, that's all.
Good idea.
All right then. Good evening. I am resident of Moreno Valley for many, many years too. I support this new phase for Skechers because, you know what, we need more jobs, we need more business to come into our city, because it's no progress without changes. And that we have to, for some people, it's hard to understand things like that, but you know what, we have to stop thinking about ourselves and think about the next generation. Some of us, we are on our way out. Tomorrow is going to be 38 years that I was employed by the County of Los Angeles. Officially, I will be retired tomorrow. But before the new year, I start a new thing for me to do in my life and in my city, I open a nonprofit organization to help the next generation because it's a lot of need in our community, and every community needs help. But here, this is our city. Let's do something, let's get up, support projects that will bring more money and that will bring benefit for the young people. And I don't understand how a trail for me to walk is more important than thousands of lives that we can change. Please, look into that. Don't look into who's done it, you know, if it's Iro or somebody else. I know the opposition is because of him. But you know what, at least he's bringing ideas and projects to make a change in people's lives. Why don't we just look into that, changes? And thank you for your attention, and thank you to really put your heart into this, what I'm doing today. Who I'm benefit, somebody that you don't know, but one day that person will be grateful for what you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Maria Garcia, followed by Nellie Menjivar.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nellie Menjivar. I don't see Maria yet. I'm going to go ahead and read my notes, I don't want to forget anything tonight. I am a current resident and homeowner of Rancho Balago area. In the past year, I've seen many, many buildings being erected in my city, and I've yet to have anybody come knocking at my door or sending me a flyer with information about these projects or inviting me to come down to City Hall to hear these projects being proposed. I want to know why these other projects are not being asked to do that. I want to know why Highland Fairview has been targeted. I don't know who it is, but for some reason, they are, I see that they are always under so much scrutiny for any other projects that they're trying to bring into our community. I'm not against any type of growth. I strongly believe that we need to have, like the young lady just said, right now, we all need to be responsible for the future, for the people that are coming after us. So I believe that, again, we are all responsible for the environmental impacts, if any, of any of the goods and services that we consume. if any, of any of the goods and services that we consume. We can't just say, I want these goods, I want the, I need these goods, but I don't want to see them in my backyard. Highland Fairview has shown us tonight some of the actual impacts the existing projects has had, and they are far, far less than what was anticipated in the original plan. And the actual number of Moreno Valley residents who have been hired at the existing project, that's pretty fantastic. I wasn't aware that the number was so high. So even if it would have been just one resident that would have been hired, that is better than nothing. I've taken the time myself to go visit the existing Skechers building. I was amazed to see the state-of-the-art project. I grew up and I was raised in the Long Beach-Carson-Wilmington area. So if you're familiar with that, you do know what a warehouse looks like. So that's why I was so impressed to see the Skechers facility because it looked like nothing, like nothing I've ever seen. So I personally am very, very happy that they have decided to be in our community. If this expansion that they are proposing is anywhere near as what is currently in place right now, I know it's going to be a tremendous, tremendous asset for our community. At the end of the day, commissioners, we are all entitled to our own opinions. We are all entitled to whatever we feel, to our own feelings, but we are not entitled to our own facts. I hope that tonight you approve this expansion based on the credible data and facts that have been made available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Maria Garcia, followed by Tony Reza.
Buenas noches. Señores y señoras, la mesa representativa. Mi nombre es Mauro García. My name is Mauro García. Soy madre, y además soy docente retirada ya. Soy ma, I'm sorry. I was going to say in Spanish. Soy madre, and I'm a retired teacher. En el transcurso de mi vida he visto muchas generaciones de jóvenes, de niños que se han desviado del camino correcto. During my life, I have seen many generations of kids that they will take a different route in life. Y eso ha sido porque nosotros como padres no les hemos dado un tiempo de calidad a nuestros hijos. And this is because, as a parent, we were not able to give them the advice that they would need. Y acá se ha debido eso. Ha sido porque nosotros hemos tenido que salir a trabajar fuera de Moreno Valley, que es donde residimos. And the reason is because most of us, we had to travel and get out of Moreno Valley to go to work. Y los niños han quedado solos. And the children stay alone. No es lo mismo que los cuiden sus padres, que le den aunque sea una hora de calidad. It's not the same, I'm sorry. It's not the same that the parents give the time, at least one hour, to be with them. Ahora que Moreno Valley tiene la oportunidad de hacer nuevas construcciones y fuentes de trabajo. Now that Moreno Valley has the opportunity to have new jobs and new opportunities of work. Yo les invito. I will invite you. A que aprovechemos esas fuentes de trabajo que están haciendo como es la compañía de los Skechers. I will invite you to... Que aprovechemos. That we take advantage of the opportunity of the companies like Skechers bringing new jobs. Ya demostró que es una compañía responsable, que tiene calidad en su trabajo, tiene apoyo de sus empleados, y también aporta ya los taxes para la comunidad. The company already showed the improvement that is in the city to pay taxes.
Thank you, your three minutes is up.
Ahora, ahora...
Thank you.
No, yo quería proponerles y pedirles que aprueben ese nuevo proyecto a la compañía constructora de... Harlem? Harlem Fairview. Harlem Fairview. Porque es una gran oportunidad, y perdón, se abusé de su tiempo, pero no estoy acostumbrada a hablar muy ligero para darme a entender. Gracias por su atención. Thank you, and she apologized to take your time. Y por escuchar mi pedido. And for listen to her. Okay.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Tony Reza, followed by Bob Palomares.
Gracias. Buenas noches.
Good evening.
A la comisión de planificación.
Good planning commissioners.
El staff.
And the staff.
Estamos aquí.
We are here tonight.
Felices.
Happy.
Porque un nuevo proyecto va a comenzar.
Because a new project will begin.
Y eso va a traer beneficio a mucha gente.
And that will bring benefits to many people.
Tenemos grandes retos aquí en la ciudad.
We have many challenges here in our city.
Estamos más inversión.
We need more investments.
Más empleos.
More employment.
Necesitamos más seguridad.
We need more security.
Necesitamos más dinero.
We need more money.
Y esa es la manera de poder obtenerlo.
And this is the way that we can do this.
Correctamente.
Correctly.
Ido Benzivi.
Ido Benzivi.
Es un hombre increíble.
Is an incredible man.
Maravilloso.
Marvelous man.
Quiero decir, yo nunca le pido nada a él.
I've never asked him for anything.
No ha pedido nada a mí.
He's never offered me anything.
Conozco.
I know him.
Un hombre humilde.
A very humble man.
Un hombre noble.
A noble man.
Un hombre generoso.
A generous man.
Y este proyecto.
And this project.
No es un proyecto más.
Is not another project.
Es uno de los mejores proyectos del mundo.
It's one of the best projects in the world.
Somos bienaventurados al estar aquí en Moreno Valley.
We are blessed to be here in Moreno Valley.
Viendo que este hombre.
Seeing that this man.
Este gran hombre invierte con nosotros.
This great man is investing in us.
Les digo algo.
I tell you something.
Sean valientes.
Be brave.
Oigan la voz de la gente.
Listen to the word of your people.
Tiene necesidad.
See the need.
Acá hay un grupo aquí en la ciudad.
There is a group here in the city.
Que siempre se opuesto a la inversión.
That has always been opposed to the investment. They never speak about families.
Nunca hablan de la necesidad de nuestra ciudad.
They never speak about the need of our city.
Siempre argumentan, se oponen, atacan.
They always argue, they always attacked with lies.
La vez pasada.
The last time.
Decían, si se hace Skechers, la ciudad estará llena de camiones aquí.
If they, they said if Skechers is approved, the city will be full of trucks. Noise.
Contaminación.
Contamination.
Mentiras.
Lies.
Mentiras.
Lies.
No escuchemos la voz.
Let's not listen to that voice.
Son las que son anti-familia.
Of people who are anti-family, anti-prosperity.
Anti-city.
Anti-city.
Seamos nosotros.
Let's, let us be, let us be wise. You are brilliant.
The staff is brillante.
The staff is brilliant. Our city is beautiful.
Y merece lo mejor de lo mejor.
And it deserves the best of the best.
Y este proyecto.
In this project.
Y el que viene.
And the one to come. Is going to transform our city. It's going to produce millions of employment. We are seeing the future.
Porque amamos esta ciudad.
Because we love this city.
Vivo aquí por más de veisincuenta años.
I've lived here for more than twenty-five years. My children have grown up here.
Espero ver.
And I hope to see.
Como prospera.
How it prospers.
Para bien.
For the, for the good of all of our families. God bless you very much, and let's make history. Yes to the project.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Bob Palomares, followed by Alejandro Flores.
Good evening, commissioners. One of the things I've come to appreciate in the city is the job that you do, the planning commission. It's pretty evident with all that we see that's good, that was mentioned earlier by Rick. All the buildings, everything that we built here because you had a hand in it. You dissect whatever's coming through you, and that's what brings it to the point that Mr. Benzivi has and Highland Fairview have always brought nothing but quality to this city. Not to, not to mention the boost in the economy, the jobs. You know, everybody's coming up here saying the same thing that, you know, this is what two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-plus people in this city want changed. Because you, like the city council, understand that the future is now. It's not ten years down the road like it was fifteen years ago when the other councils and planning commissioners were here. It was very slow because it was really intended just to be a bedroom community, but it's not. It's hard to get out of this city in the morning. So what he's offering us are jobs for the people, and you know, we all benefit. Everyone benefits. So when people come up here and talk against them, they really don't have anything to stand on because when they get corrected, you wonder where they got their information. But you do a wonderful job, and I know you'll approve it because you can't turn down, you didn't turn down Skechers, and look at how wonderful it turned out to be. So it's in your hands, and that's what the people want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Alejandro Flores, followed by Rosemary Martinez.
Good evening, planners, commissioners. I want to thank you to Mr. Skechers. I've been working there for six months. And I just retired from the state, and working at Skechers is joyful. It's, people are, it's like a family. It's amazing. And I think that, you know, a lot of people are single parents, and they're out there looking for a job in the community. Save gas. To me, he's, we're already there. Skechers is already there. All we need is a little bit more space to progress, to grow, to get more people involved, you know, more jobs out there for the community. I'm like ten minutes away from my home. I get up, go to work, come home. I'm already home by the time I get home. Anyways, I hope you guys vote yes. I'm happy to be there, and...
I'm with her, planning commissioners. Thank you for having us here tonight. God bless you all. I'm a testimony, live in testimony, what a job can do for somebody. My life wasn't always that great at one time. It took a change for the better. Let's just say it. Thank God for men like him who give an opportunity to people like myself and others, other women and men alike, like me at Skechers Distribution. When I met them, they had just started. I'm an equipment operator there. Been there over a year, about a year and a half. I've met young women and young men didn't, were living in people's garages. They didn't have any money, no jobs to feed. They were barely getting by to feed their children, to pay their rent. They didn't even have a home of their own, but these same men and women that I now know, they, they're driving their own vehicles. They're purchasing their own homes. They're able to clothe their children the way they want to, feed them the way they want to. I don't know about you guys, but I drive through other communities, other counties, like San Bernardino. There's a lot of other counties they don't care about. They don't care about building, building for lives and building for people's futures. I don't want that for my city. We make our money here. We spend our money here. There's the first gentleman that got up here and spoke. He talked about a bigger and better and stronger community. That's what's going to make us stronger. That's what makes us shine amongst other counties, amongst other communities, caring about one another. The decision you make today is going to touch somebody's life in the future. Best believe that. It's going to happen. And this man's blessed right here. So I got to thank him for the opportunity that he's given us to be able to be a part of that company. We love our jobs. We love the people that we work with. Our managers, our leaders, our lead men, they're all great people. They're here today. Thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, next speaker, Rosemary Martinez, followed by Florentino Aragon. I don't think I pronounced that right. My apologies. Oh, Rosemary's gone?
Hello, everybody. My name is Florentino Aragüe. I have been a resident of Moreno Valley for about eighteen years, and I am a local business owner. And I have been in the construction industry for over twenty years. I just eyeballed these drawings. I think they'll look pretty good. And if it's an existing company that wants to expand, why say no, or why even think about it? I mean, I think it's a, it should be a done deal. You know, it's giving employment for the construction team. That's going to be what? How many months is that project projected to be completed? Is it like a six-month project, a year? About one year? That's, that's good money. You know, I'm in construction. I wish I could get a job there. That way I could drive just, what, ten minutes instead of me driving to LA or driving to San Diego. So I support this project, and I hope that you guys think alike and support it as well. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Roxana Ramirez, followed by Tom Gerald.
Good evening, planning commission. I would like to say that I'm so happy and I agree for the second phase that's coming up. I hope you guys approve it because, to me, like other people said, I see for the future, for like my son, probably my grandson. Maybe they're going to have the opportunity, maybe not me, but a lot of young people can get a job at that place. And I noticed that a lot of family needs jobs because it's very hard, and sometimes we, we struggle with, to make payments, your mortgage, your bills, everything is going up. But our salary is stay the same. So I agree because it's going to be more opportunities for a lot of people. And we have dreams. We, a lot of people have dreams. Like me, I would like to get a home. And it's hard to get a house. But I know that we have to work hard. And I would like to get a job here in the city. Like other people said, sometimes we spend a lot of hours driving to get to work. So, but if we have the jobs here, it's going to be more easy for us to spend time with our kids, with our family. So I agree, and I hope you guys say yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Tom Gerald, followed by Rafael Brugeras. Good to see you, Mr. Gerald. It's been a while.
Good to see you, Chairman Barnes. Tom Gerald Senior, speaking on behalf of myself and also very much on behalf of the Sundance Center, where I've now spent pushing twenty-five years since nineteen ninety-five, a little neighborhood center in Central Sunnymeat. Been a resident since nineteen eighty-one. So Chairman Barnes, commissioners, members of staff, members of the public, both here in the chamber and watching at home, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I want to welcome our new, well, first, congratulations on your acknowledgement of your good work here. It's earned. And welcome our new planning commissioners. I haven't spoken before. I mean, we have a new planning director, so a few new faces in the crowd here. It's all good. We enthusiastically support this project. Number one, it's a logical extension of the existing development that's out there. Effectively, it was already built in, more or less. I mean, there's always some changes, minor modifications, but you know, it's just an extension of what's already going on there. So it's logical. It's a, it's a good fit. The Highland Fairview, Highland Fairview has been a quality, a responsible, and a very community-involved landlord. And something that impressed me is the maintenance of the project. You know, there was a lot of complaints when the first hearing came up about all landscaping wasn't up. Look at it. It's coming in very nicely, and it's going to continue to grow. And it's well-maintained, and that's a good calling card. The proposed tenant, Skechers, not only brings, it's a very high profile, high image, high quality. The proposed tenant Skechers not only brings, it's a very high-profile, high-image, high-quality, internationally-known business brand to our city. So that's a good calling card. I've had people from outside the city who've seen the existing facility and say, wow, we didn't know, is that Moreno Valley? And I say, yeah. So they said, wow, that's great. So it's a good calling card. I've been out to the store sometimes and it's amazing how far some of the people come from out of state, even tourists from outside the country, so it's a good thing. And as far as the elimination of the previously approved commercial, you know, I'm in the commercial real estate business, it's a tough market out there right now, a lot of vacancy and it's a push. So, and then I, I have a letter of support from our landlord, I don't know if it made it, we got it kind of last in the wire, so I'll leave it with the staff here, in case it didn't get into your packet. But you know, one little anecdotal thing, the owner of the center never showed a lot of enthusiasm about Moreno Valley until he toured their Skechers facility. And he was, and he'd just finished the surgery a few weeks before and he jumped up and said, this is the best thing ever happened in the city and it's what we need to have. So I want to thank you to speak and continue your good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker Rafael Burgueras, followed by Luis Palomaros.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Residents, and our guests. This is a small building. It's only 768 square feet compared to the 1,800 square feet next to it. This is a tiny building, an extension to make Skechers advance more in their productivity. That's all it is. It's a small building. But think about the big building that's next, the big building that's built already today. It's world-known, it's on a winning project throughout the world. They come to see it. And it's environmental-friendly, very friendly. That's important. And that's the kind of project that Highland Fairview built, environmental-friendly. One of the speakers mentioned that he likes turnabouts. I like turnabouts. Because when I get lost and I find a turnabout, I get in and I get out and I go where I'm going. So the good thing about a turnabout is going to help the truckers that don't know our city, got lost accidentally, find their way back onto the freeway instead of going down to the neighborhoods. That's a good thing. Okay? Now, when you get on Thill Door, there are a lot of lanes there. Sometimes when you go to Skechers, you're probably the only one coming out of it. There's nobody else out there, probably only you. That's how, see, we spend money unnecessary. So we don't need a lot of things if a lot of things are not happening at one time. Okay? Now, he mentioned when the high peak comes, there's always going to be a high peak. Christmas, Thanksgiving, and all those things. That's when you see a lot of trucks come in and deliver to our city. And they disappear. And the ones that remain probably be the 200. And half of those are probably UPS, FedEx, and the rest of the people that deliver food. Okay? The one thing I do know about Edo Benzini, he'll keep his word like he always have. We have people that come in here and trash his business. Who, you know who loses? The district loses. The people that got to go drive 50, 60, 70 miles outside of our city and other areas. You know how many people come to Skechers throughout the whole world? People from all over the world go to Skechers and they don't buy one pair of shoes, they buy tons of pairs of shoes. Why? Because we sell them for the least amount of money in the city of Moreno Valley. Just approve his project because we've done it before with other developers. It's just a zone change. Even the city's going to come to you for a zone change.
Thank you. Next speaker Luis Palomaros, followed by Ray, Roy Blackard.
Wow, Luis Palomaros, community activist. Like Rafael said, I didn't even know that. It's a smaller building, what's the big deal? Common sense thinking. I mean, let's go, go with this. I hope the planning commission is going to do that tonight. And as far as all the speakers today, they said everything and there's nothing left for me to say, but only about the, you know, this is going to be a, like one of the other speakers said, a brilliant, amazing building. We need this. It's the greenest building in the nation. People have come from all over the place to come and see this building so they could do it where they're at. It's great. We can't, I mean, we can't get better than that. We're a blessed city. And we're a blessed city to have a developer here that wants to stay here and keep on moving forward. Because with all the liars that come out and been fighting us all this time, I would have packed up and said, get the hell, God, I'm going to get the hell out of this place. Well, I don't need all this drama, excuse my language, you know? And you had Tom Thorndyke coming out with all the propaganda and what he don't like and what he, I mean, I mean, if it wasn't for them, the Liars Club, we would have been five years, we would have been five years further on. And you know, they've had us in the courts. Well, why haven't they done, I mean, they had all this tied up in the courts forever, you know? Like, they know why, they act like they don't know, but they know exactly what they're doing. So saying all that, as far as, you know, they say, they don't want to be, they don't want these buildings here. And, but us, we need these jobs here because we have kids and we got grandchildren. Maybe Thorndyke had kids and they moved out, maybe they don't want nothing to do with it. Maybe Helen, maybe Lindsay, also hers, who knows? And she's always crying about something coming to our city, we need these things here. And about trails, I mean, hey, we got a lot of them. And I think the developer will take care of that if that's a need or if that's, you know, in the, in the plan. So they come out with the propagandas and the lies, as usual, but let's go forward. This is what we need. We need more jobs. The developer, hey, he wants to be here and bring us these jobs. We need more tax revenue. I mean, all the way around, it's a win-win situation. So we got to go forward and I hope tonight the planning commission goes forward with this because it's not a big building like the first Skechers. I mean, way back when, 10 years ago, when that bill, we, we went out there. You know, we had the Helen, the Lenzies and the other guy that was here earlier against the project, but we went out there and collected 17,000 signatures. They didn't talk, you know, that dirty dozen didn't talk for the whole community here. And the other people touched my heart when they said they got jobs there, they're working there, it's changed their life, it turned it around. And it's going to turn around for a lot of people. Not everybody wants to go to college and get a degree, but there's good jobs there and they pay good money. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Roy Blackard, followed by Patricia Campos.
You may wonder a lot of times why I come to these and many other meetings and say what I say. I get asked that question a lot of why. You know what? I'm not worried about Mr. Skechers. He's going to do fine no matter what happens. The guy I'm concerned about was the, the two that came up here. And he talked about the opportunity a place like Skechers gave him. Said I might not have made some of the best decisions in life, but now that I've got opportunity, I've got a job and I know a lot more people, he said, that have got that opportunity too. And now they are productive citizens. They're adding to the base of this community, of our state and our nation. And a lot of times I think we lose focus of that. We only think about what we want or what affects us. And they don't look at the overall picture of what happens when you constantly come up here and browbeat, run the negative, and run false narratives. We have a lot of problems in the state. Mr. Skechers mentioned one of them, the Sequel Law, and you see how the traffic is not the impacts that you see. None other than, I will take you back to the World Logistics Center hearings. And I said the biggest source of pollution is idling cars and trucks. And that is caused by people driving 87 million miles to work every day. And none other than the spokesman for this South Coast Air Quality Management District came up to me after that meeting and said I was exactly right. So let's cut all the BS that goes on around here and let's deal with reality. Reality is, these high-Q warehouses bring much more dollars, tax dollars, property tax, and everything else into your city. You should know that and you should factor that in with your decisions. Because it's projects like this one and many others that you see here, which are adding into the economic expansion we're seeing in this city. And ultimately, as that gentleman said, not only him, but many others are going to have an opportunity, and there's 800,000 more square feet that that opportunity is going to be if you pass this.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Patricia Campos. Patricia here? Apparently she is not. So with that, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and deliberate.
Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me? Yes.
It's customary that we would offer the applicant opportunity to rebut those if you want.
You're right. My apologies. Would the applicant like to make any comments? Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. I don't really have any rebuttals except I really want to thank everybody. And I don't know most of you that come today, I would like to meet you afterwards if you're still here for those really wonderful comments, heartfelt statements you made. So I want to thank you. I know you have much better things to do than to come out here tonight and support a project that you may or may not have a direct relationship to, but nonetheless, I appreciate it very much. It really makes me feel that there's a real community here and I appreciate you. And of course, I appreciate all of you for dedicating the hours and time of your lives to try and improve our community and sort through a lot of issues. For those who do have issues with the project, my door is always open. I know there was two people tonight that had some issues. Back 10 years ago, I thought they invented fake news in Moreno Valley. Turns out they learned from it and now it's spread. But there's a lot of things that were said that are just not accurate, except to say that they are members of our community, I do appreciate them, I do care for them, and extend my hand to them to say that if they send, they really have any questions, more details that could be presented in one night, and they're welcome to come by and I'd be happy to sit down with them and sort through whatever issues they may have. And thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you very much. With that, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and deliberate. I'll never do one right, I'd never make it all the way through. I should just quit. So any observations, thoughts?
Well, I just see it as an extension to Skechers and Skechers is, you know, doing fantastic job. And I think that, you know, it's, it's not that, with all the, the things we need to do, I think it's, I, I, I think it's a no-brainer myself. I really do. I think it's going to be an asset to the community, an asset to the people that live here. It did bring a lot more jobs than what people were out there saying, like Mr. Benzini said, fake news. So basically, I love existing Skechers. And if that's going to be anything that's going to be on the other side of it, it's going to be an asset to the community and it's going to look very nice. And he just goes above and beyond. So I really think that we're going to get a lot of revenue, a lot of jobs, and for me, I, I don't see a problem with it at all.
Anybody else? Mr. Sims?
Yeah, I, I live very close, very close to this and, you know, I, and they're very, you know, the prologist has gone in and they're really, it's pretty benign, the impact, you know, to, to, you never see, well, I shouldn't say you never see the trucks, but you know, they're, they're, I guess I don't get out much for my, but they, it is, it's pretty benign, the, they get on and get out. And, but anyhow, as far as the, this project goes, you know, I, I think the focus should be this isn't the World Logistics Project, this is the Highland Fairview Corporate Park. And it's, it's an amendment to an existing project. And I, I, you know, from a, I'm going to vote yes for it. I feel comfortable, comfortable for the, I, I feel comfortable in the fact that the, you know, with the impact analysis on the traffic was, you know, significantly less and I, you know, there's really kind of two, what kind of really got me was is there was the initial analysis done for the original EIR. Then it goes down and it shows the, what it actually is, which is significantly less, but the use is going with the ITE analysis, which I think you got to, these buildings are going to be there 50, 100, you know, 50, 75 years or whatever the useful life of the building will be. It may not be Skechers in there forever, it may be another use. So you have to do, take that in consideration. The truck traffic you see there may be different for another occupant of the, of the building. But suffice to say, the ITE analysis is, was, is significantly less than what was originally projected. So anyhow, I'm rambling, but you know, when you go with the less traffic, that the synergy that comes with that is, should be less air, air pollution. So, and I, I do agree, more jobs is beneficial to the, to the community, keeps people off the freeway, keeps parents at home with their kids, taking them to baseball and stuff like that. And the city, I think, gets the benefits with the additional property tax. So it's a, I think, I think it's a great project.
Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, okay. Wow, let me see, where do I start? I think I started here in Moreno Valley in 1970. I've been in the city almost 50 years, about 47 years. I remember getting out of high school and the places to go work was a raceway. You can go to Roar, Miskalinis, I don't know if you guys remember any of these names. Remember TGNY, stuff like that. And we used to stand on the back of March Air Force Base. And then when it went reserve, a lot of things fell apart. And I remember in the school district, we were really scrambling around to figure out where we're going to get the students from because most of them came from March Air Force Base. And I just remember that in order to work in Moreno Valley, you had to travel. You had to go out to Riverside, you had to go to Los Angeles, you had to go somewhere else to get a job if you weren't one of the lucky few to work at some of these places. And it kind of brings me back to, back to some companies like Kodak and Radio Shack and Circuit City and even Toys R Us. Sears is having a big problem. And remember Polaroid and Tower Records, Pan Am? You know, if those folks had thought about change, they might still be around today. And Moreno Valley just can't fall into that. We have to be progressive and we have to move forward and we have to be able to provide what once was a bedroom town, opportunities for people to work. I, I'm fortunate that I work and live in town and my commute is only about four and a half miles and it's wonderful. And I'd like for other people to be able to have that as well. So I, I'm all for it. So I think it's a great idea. I, I'd like to see more of it. I'd like to see Moreno Valley continuing to progress.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Harris?
I just wanted to say, this project was approved in 2009. And now we're just making a few little changes to it. So I think Skechers was probably planning on, you know, completing this second phase and I think that we should give that to them. And the elevations that, that some of us might have seen, they're, they're beautiful. Some of them look like museums. So I, I think that's going to be really nice to have Phase Two when it's completed. I think everybody will like it.
Vice Chair Corzett?
Well, one of the things I always look for on the projects is our, our buildings that are interesting, well-designed. I think that elevates the status of our community. Skechers, I think, is the best building we have. It's just gorgeous. The design of it is beautiful. What I'm seeing here is just as lovely. A lot of thought went into the elevations and the modernization of it. I think the landscaping has that potential to be just as good as the fill-in that's going along on the freeway now with Skechers. So it's just a continuation of a very good project in my eyes and I am going to vote for it.
Thank you. Breakers? Breakers?
One thing I'd like to say here is that this addition is needed. And one thing about it, Highlands Fairview and Skechers have been good corporate citizens in this town. I mean, I've been involved with them on some projects where they came up to bat with the funds that we needed for Boy Scouts, or whatever it was. So, and I really appreciate that. They've done a great job. I think, I'm going to vote for it. It's a terrific project.
And last but not least, just so this isn't a complete love fest, I've never been a huge fan of the architecture, but to me, that's, that's unimportant. That's a market decision, and if that's what Mr. Benzivi wants to build, more power to him. At the last meeting, we talked about a cannabis location. And one of the things that's concerning everybody is what's it going to turn into? And we don't know, because it's fairly new to the city. Well, we were having the same kind of discussions with Skechers way back. Everybody was very nervous about what it was going to turn into. And there were a lot of dire projections about the direction the city would go if we opened the door to Skechers and built this big, huge monstrosity of a building. Well, we've now got a 10-year window to analyze it, and I think they've proven to be an excellent neighbor to us. So they've, they've proven theirselves, they've proven themselves. And obviously, this extension is needed, because they've gone to the effort to put it before us. And I think it's a great addition. And they'll continue to be good corporate neighbors. So you've got my vote, too. With that, to move forward, I think we need a motion. Mr. Sims?
I make a recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve Resolution Number 2019-17, approve Resolution Number 2019-18, approve Resolution 2019-19, approve Resolution 2019-20, and with the modifications provided in the handout with the modified conditions presented by staff.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a request for one additional correction. Mr. Thornsley was correct that our special, our Condition Number Two refers to a different project. Really, the intent was to have it referred to PA 07-0091, which is the previous plot plan. So with that additional change, if I may, to the conditions of approval, as stated by staff.
Well done. That's acceptable? All right, Second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Steven with the Second. Please vote. All votes have been cast. The motion carries seven to zero. Do we have a staff rep?
Yes, sir. The Planning Commission's recommendation on this item will be carried forward to the City Council for their review and consideration. For final determination, we would expect to see it going there next month.
Thank you. I know we have three other projects that we have to discuss, but I would like to take a 10-minute recess. So apologies to the people that have been waiting to get here, but let's take 10 minutes. We will be reconvening at 9:30. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. At long last, we get to move to Case Number Two. A conditional use permit, PEN 18-0241. Applicant is Andrew Gomez. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Thank you. This conditional use permit application will be presented to you by Jeff as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, the request is for a retail cannabis dispensary, and the address is 24703 Alessandro. This is located in the Sunnymead Village Shopping Center. So it's bounded, south side of Alessandro, east of Indian Street. And on the south side of the center is Jake Jenkins. The, on the north side of Alessandro and south side of Jenkins is a single-family residential. Be through, sorry. And to the east and west of this location are additional commercial developments. So the background that you've heard in the past, but it's, it's good for the community to hear, the City Council recently adopted laws that establish regulations for operation and the ongoing, actually, the ongoing operation of commercial cannabis uses. And it's codified in our municipal code in Chapter Nine, which is the zoning code. The Sunnymead Shopping Center is zoned appropriately for a cannabis dispensary. This is retail sales only. The business itself is looking to operate pursuant to state law, and that would be within the window of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. The space itself is 1,300 square feet, so it's not large. But it is an inline store in the Sunnymead Shopping Center. The space itself, as you walk in, as customers will walk in the front, it has 220 square feet for customer waiting area, a 500-square-foot area for sales and displays. And then in the back area are more of the employee-used spaces, including a secured storage room, restroom, break room. And the employee parking, to my knowledge, and access will be from the south part of the building. So in the shopping center, there is parking on the north side as well as the south side. Six parking spaces are required for this space. And there is a recorded reciprocal parking and access agreement for the shopping center, which allows customers and employees alike to park in various spaces as available. The image on the far left is the proposed floor plan. And on the right is generally what the space looks like now. What it looks like now is pretty much open with a restroom in, in the back of the space. What they're proposing to do, as I mentioned, you walk in the front, there'll be a waiting area. And then there is a secured access to the sales area. You'll have to be buzzed in, or perhaps they'll have what they call a man door, or a man/woman door. I don't want to be politically incorrect. But it controls access to this space, which is very important for cannabis uses. Only people that are 21 years of age or older can access. And then in the back of the space are the, more of the employee areas, and that would be restricted access as well. This is an image of the sign for the Sunnymead Shopping Center. And on the right is a, is a picture of the space. It is bounded on one side by a restaurant, on the other side by a tattoo shop. And we have a special condition of approval attached that building added that requires the applicant to make improvements to the front of the building. The wood fascia and that, the wood area in the front, if it's rotted, needs to be removed and replaced, and then repainted. And so that's a condition of approval. There is another special condition of approval, getting towards a community benefit of this new business. And that is that we're requesting that they provide landscape plants for the Alessandro Street median. So in the median, if you, if you've noticed, it's a, it's a recent addition. It's very beautiful. We're looking for about 100-foot-wide area that if there are missing plants, they'll be responsible for causing the replacement of those. And that helps beautify Alessandro Boulevard. What else? In addition, what's important for a business, for this retail cannabis business, is their security plan. Now, this, this new business has received their provisional permit. And part of the provisional permit review was submission of a variety of plans, including security and odor control. So I thought it was important to just identify some of the highlights of security that they're proposing. They will have licensed security guards on premises during hours of operation. They will be inside the building, monitoring who comes in, as well as outside. They will have two secured parking spaces where they will receive product for sale and, and other things, and that would be patrolled by the security guard as well. In addition, they're going to have interior and exterior cameras, which is very important for, say, police department, if there's a problem, say, in the parking lot behind this business, they have video feed that the police department would be able to look at and review. And in addition, they'll be able to monitor activities that they may not be able to see from inside the business. So it keeps it safer for the employees, safer for the customers, and safer for the businesses and their customers surrounding it. Odor control. Some cannabis businesses, typically if you're growing cannabis, has a very strong odor. And so the requirement is to control that odor so that you don't smell it beyond the space where they're selling. So the restaurant, if you go to the restaurant, you're not going to smell cannabis products. If you're outside, you're not going to smell cannabis products. And the way they control that is by having a combination of air exchange that will bring in clean air, but as it goes, as it's filtered or exhausted outside, it goes through a filtration system. So it removes particulate matter. It removes the odors, so you don't smell that. In addition, they're going to have specially filters, a gel filter, a carbon filter, that will absorb those odors. Very important to have. And the heating and air conditioning system is one of the, one of the items that the Building Division will be reviewing, approving, and issuing permits for, and doing inspections on. So they will, we will have control over how that system works. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. This ends staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. The applicant is here as well, to answer any questions that you may have of them as well. Thank you very much.
Questions of staff?
I have one thing, and it's really, really picky. On Packet Page 777, under miscellaneous operating requirements, we had the same thing the last time with this. It says, it's talking about persons under the age of 21 shall not be allowed on the premise. But it also said there, shall not be allowed to serve as a driver for a mobile delivery service. Well, you can't have the mobile delivery services. So if you could just cross that out once and for all, you'll make me a very happy camper.
Okay. So in Condition Number 52, you would, you're recommending deletion of the last sentence?
The last part of the sentence.
Last part of the sentence.
About serving as a driver for a mobile delivery service.
Oh, I see. I see it. Thank you very much.
The last half of that.
I see it. Thank you.
Another question. What's a secured parking space?
In our code, we asked that each business identify two parking spaces that will be secured. And what that means is, either in some larger facilities, you can actually drive the vehicles in the building, and they're secured that way. For this space, that's relatively small, it means that they have designated two parking spaces that when deliveries come in of product for the business, or outgoing cash, for example, the security guard knows where that's coming in. He can watch it. And we make sure that there are cameras that will also observe those parking spaces. So in this case, they're, they're to the rear of the building.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Would the applicant like to add anything to the report?
My name's Damian Nasseri. I'm the attorney for the applicant. And we just wanted to make sure that the commission knows that we're really here to be part of the community. These are three young males that have been born and raised in the community. They really want to give back to the community. I understand the concerns with a lot of residents regarding illegal cannabis operations that don't have licenses, and the smell, and the crime, and the riffraff. Those are folks that are not invested in the community. These are gentlemen that have gone down the long, hard road, expensive road, of, of putting a lot of time and effort into this. And it's something that they're not going to want to jeopardize by having the odors. They're going to have, as the gentleman mentioned, they're going to have the air filters to kill all the smell. They're going to have two armed security guards with all the video cameras. I think it's going to be in addition to the community. It's going to bring jobs and taxes. And it's going to, I think, make that area even safer, having those, those security guards there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, pardon me. There is a question from one of the commissioners.
How many people do you believe this will be employed, and any idea of what the rate will be, the pay rate?
Yes, I'd imagine it'd be about probably five to 10 employees to start off with, possibly growing from there. As you can see, it's, it's not an extremely large space. But they do anticipate being busy and being able to employ a good five to 10 people, with maybe 10 to 15, maybe 20, within the next few years. And I'm sorry, the second part of your question?
The rate of pay?
The rate of pay, they're going to be paying above the living wage. So whatever minimum wage is, plus probably a couple dollars an hour on top of that. Or that'd be for starting. And then with the ability to get promoted and get raises from there.
It might not even be pertinent, but I was wondering, is this their first endeavor?
This is their first endeavor, yes, to go down to, to get a license. That's, that's what, now, they've had some experience working in some other shops, but this is their first time to, to own.
So it's a new business for them?
New business, correct.
Mr. Harris?
I was wondering, the security, is it going to be armed security, or?
They would prefer to have armed security, but as in all other matters, they want to work with the city and do what the city prefers. So if the city doesn't want armed guards, then we don't need to have those.
And will the security person that's, when they're inside the shop, will they have, be able to monitor what's going on by cameras?
Yes.
What's going on outside?
Yes. So they'll be, they plan on having two security guards, one inside and one patrolling outside, to make sure that people come and go, and they're not hanging around in the parking lot, or, or smoking on the site. They want to get them in and get them out. Again, they don't want to do anything to jeopardize their license. And they're going to have cameras all around the outside and the inside that will be able to be monitored from a screen, where they can see all the camera angles on, on one screen.
Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, I mean, this is, I think, the third, third one we've seen come, come before us. So in, so on these, on the licensing process, they have these, well, on the floor plans, I noticed there's a waiting area, and then there's a access to get into the actual sales room. And so, or product display area. So does, in the permitting process, do they, is there a limit? Does the actual permit that the state provides, or whoever the regulatory agency is, that licenses these things, do they give an exact amount of people that can go into the sales area? And that's why there's a waiting area? How does that?
I'm not aware. I've read through the state code. I'm not, I don't recall any, any kind of limitation on the numbers of ingress and egress. The man trap, or the person trap, is really there to regulate the flow so that people can't just run into the shop.
I see.
But the, but the setup is such that everyone will check in at the front with the receptionist, and they have to be, provide ID and their medical card, if, you know, for medical use. And no one gets into the back without having checked in, and the security guard's standing right there, too. So there's, all of those things working in conjunction, I think, will be effective at regulating the flow.
Speedboat, traffic calming. Question of staff. Does the city have a, have a position as to armed or unarmed guards? Is it operator's choice?
We do not have a position on that.
Okay. So it's your option, then?
Okay.
Right? That's what I take from that.
At least as far as the conditional use permit is concerned, they may have other requirements that their business, their business use license that was imposed on them already, that is not subject to this hearing. So I wouldn't want to tell them freely, you don't have to, but at least it's not an additional
Nothing that we are reviewing tonight controls whether, I got you. Okay. All right. All right. Don't appear to be any other questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open public comments. First speaker, Richard Carrillo.
Good evening. I want to thank the commission for hearing me out here as a resident. A few months back, there was a dispensary that was right in the same place. And I lived right on the back of that street, on Jenkins Drive. And in there, it would fill up, all of a sudden, this massive traffic. There's people back there being shut down, going into this place, coming out, smelling like dope all over the place. And it was ugly. It's in front of my house. My house is elevated a little bit, and it's eye to eye with everything that goes on right there. I know it's the back, but you're talking about six parking space, it's going to fill up all the way around the back. And this thing began to smell. People, I can't even invite any of my church brothers to come down to my house because it was embarrassing. They'd come and see the truck, what's going on over there. Hey, guess what? They're selling dope. And so, the smell was so bad, my daughter won't even come to my house to give my grandson his first birthday because of that. And I think that, you know, I'm the only one probably going to speak here from my street, but I bet you there's a silent majority, as Nixon would say. Then they don't want it there. It smells. I talked to my neighbors. They don't want it there. And you talk, you guys are raising security issues already? If a gunfight went, I show you. Look, this is my living room window. If a gun, there's a door right there. If a gunfight broke out, guess where those bullets are going? They're going right through my living room. And I'm not trying to get excited or anything, but, you know, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about this. Marijuana is not, it doesn't help our society. It's a detriment to our society. She said that there's 20 applicants. Seriously? We need 20 dispensaries in our city? Get them out of our neighborhoods. Get them out of the market area. Put them somewhere else, man. But this is, this is not going to help us. It doesn't help our city. You want to have jobs from, you know, all these places we talked about earlier? You know, what are they going to do? They're going to spend it on that? Let me ask you one question before I run out of time. Look, if the proposal, if the proposal for a dispensary was in front of your house, whether it's the front side or the back side, would you like it there? Would you like to look through your living room window and see the traffic of marijuana? They buy it and come right out and smoke it, by the way. I don't care what kind of filters you're promising you want, whatever promises they make. It's going to be, it's going to be a problem. Would you invite the mayor over to your house so you can smell it and see all that going over there? I doubt it. I doubt it. I'm asking you as a family man, and for the rest of my street, put this thing down. Get it out of there. Put it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Barnes, if I may?
Yes.
It's important to note that the use that this gentleman is referring to was in illegal, illegal marijuana cannabis sales. The reason they were in the back or behind the space is so that they weren't seen by perhaps police department. There were no regulations imposed by the city. As compared to our applicant and other applicants here tonight who follow the regulations and will be under, if you choose to approve, the conditions of the conditional use permit. And if they don't follow the conditions, you have the ability to ask them to come back and speak, address why they're not. Plus, we have code enforcement. If it's an illegal use, the police department's trying to shut those down. So I just wanted to interject that if I may.
Thank you. Next speaker, Rafael Burgueras.
Believe you once again, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, and residents. It's pretty hard to follow behind a resident like that, like himself. But Richard needs to understand that we have laws and regulations in the city of Moreno Valley to prohibit people hanging out in the back, or in the front, or on the side. This is why we have the toughest laws and rules in the city of Moreno Valley. I believe that we're the only city in the county of Riverside that got the toughest rules. For anyone to get this far in this chamber, did a lot of soul searching. Follow all the rules to obey. Every applicant that comes before you today or in the future must obey the same rules. No one gets away from that. And this is what I like about reading the items. Each one must obey the rules. Now, Andrew Gomez did something right. He saved his money to be an entrepreneur, okay? He's only going to have 1,300 square feet. It's a pretty tiny place. Now, by looking at the address that's on the agenda, I went the opposite way. I went to 403, not 703. So it took me back to Moreno Beach, and you know where it put me? In front of the Christian Church Discovery. I said, oh, no. I know they're not going to build a dispensary out here. So I finally looked at it, and it's 24703. That took me back into Moreno Valley, back into the plaza, and I was so happy to see the sign of the staff where the dispensary was going to be, away from everything, okay? So if they keep their promise to you and the rest of the city, there'll be no problems. But as Jeff mentioned, a report will bring it back to you so we can hear the case. And if they're not honoring the law and breaking the license, then you have the right to revoke their license in the city of Moreno Valley. They can go to Paris if they want, because they have no rules there. We have rules here. I'm really sad for his case, but I hope, as Jeff said, through all the brand-new technology, of all the gizmos that we're putting inside this place to stop the smell, people are not going to be smoking out there. They can call the police. I do feel for the resident. I hope it would not be the way he saw it once, and I hope there'll never be gunshots in front of his house.
Thank you. Next speaker, Tom Gerald Senior.
Chair Barnes, if I can interject quickly before the next speaker comes up. Our last speaker made a good point. There is an incorrect address, and the staff report shown as location. It's addressed as 27403. In the remainder of the report, and in all the notices that went out, it has the correct address. And the correct address is 24703. So I apologize for that.
Thank you. Tom, it's all yours.
No problem. Tom Gerald Senior, again speaking on behalf of myself, Chairman Barnes, Vice Chairman Korsak, members of the staff and the public. Again, thank you for taking our comments. I was definitely odd man out when they came up with the approval for the marijuana ordinance. I opposed it. Mainly my concern was, you know, the number of young kids in the city. I said, if you've got 5% of them, you know, with their head in the bag, you know, it's not going to do their life a whole lot better. So, and I remain philosophically non-aligned, okay? That being said, the city did legalize it. They have made a policy. They've accepted it. You know, a vast majority of the citizens that want to, you know, use the marijuana, you know, our state law authorizes it. I think at some point, federal probably coming to compliance. I can't speak to that. But bottom line, we actually had our center, an illegal bootleg place came in, totally defrauded us, and a peron sack in the building. There were miserable people have around. We evicted them. And long story short, and like I said, we suffered losses. It was a big headache. And so I have great compassion for what Mr. Carrillo had to say. Bluntly, I doubt I'd want it in my, you know, front yard either. But, and I'm actually applying these comments to the next two applications. This is such a step forward to go through the conditional use process, and I really commend the gentleman who are going through the pains, because it's not cheap, it's expensive. I mean, it's, you know, many thousands of dollars. Maybe the staff can tell us. A lot of money, a lot of, you know, hurdles to get over. And I do think conditional use permit, if they are not abiding by it, you know, it can be revoked. That's my understanding. So we have some regulation. And I hope the city keeps a tight, you know, rein on any of these. But I'd much rather see it be a legalized place. Like I said, I do commend the applicants for going through the hurdles and all the hoops to do it, and hopefully the city will do their part. You might get some comments from our police department, maybe fire, too. But so, but as I said, so I, speaking in favor on the fact, I think it's a, you know, step, better step in the right direction, you know, given the laws the city's accepted. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right. Seeing the other speakers, would the applicant like to come up and rebut, or add anything to what is, what we've heard?
It's definitely legitimate concerns by the residents. I just think that the distinction needs to be made between these unlicensed shops that were there before. They didn't have any accountability. They have no license to lose. These gentlemen are on the other side. They have full accountability. The videos surveillance is going to be accessible to the city. The police can come in anytime. As has been mentioned, there's a lot of money, a lot of time put into obtaining the license, so they do have something to lose, and they're not going to want to lose it. And that's why they're going to do everything they can to comply with the city codes. Certainly, there will never be any smoking outside. The security guards are going to be standing right there. And so, and the odors as well. I don't know what the business was there before, but I venture to guess that they didn't have the air filters, because why put in that extra cost if you don't have a license to lose? No accountability. These guys are going to have full accountability, and they want to do everything the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will close the public comment portion and deliberate. Any comments?
I asked if they were entrepreneurs and first timers, and they seem to be. And having, like they say, skin in the game, I would imagine that they are going to abide by all the restrictions and all the laws that are set with the city, because otherwise, they have a lot to lose. They're not a big corporation. And I kind of applaud them, even though they're going into the cannabis business, which I don't know much about myself. But I don't have a problem with it. They seem to have done everything right, and I really hope you guys do a good job, all three of you.
Anyone else? Your lights on?
It is. No, I concur. And listening to the resident and listening to the applicant, for me, for one, I think he makes a really, really valid point to just make sure that you distinguish the difference between an illegal shop and a legal shop. There is a huge difference there. You cannot compare the two. They're not the same. An illegal shop will operate, and smells will be coming out the door, and people are hanging out there and smoking. Where the legal shop, you won't even notice it was there. You won't smell it. You won't, you won't even know it. People have to check in and out. They got to get buzzed in through the man trap, and there won't be people hanging out. And there'll be two security guards versus the illegal shop. So there's a huge, huge distinction between the two. So I wish you guys luck. I hope you guys, you know, follow all the rules in Moreno Valley, and I'm with you.
Anyone else? Yeah, all right. Well, the only thing I want to add is that it was a point that was brought up at the last meeting when we covered a cannabis facility that the CUP is discretionary, and if any of the neighbors or any of the city citizens have an issue, bring it forward. We're going to learn how these things work in the next year or two, and I think it's everybody's responsibility to hold their feet to the fire, make sure that they're good neighbors. But as everyone said, they have a lot of skin in the game, and I'm sure they will be. So I see no reason to disapprove it either. Nobody has any comments? Let's have a motion and move on. Anyone? Vice Chair Korsak?
I recommend that we approve resolution number 2019-11.
There was a commission, there was a condition modification also.
Number 52.
With number 52.
That you requested.
That I requested.
All right. A second? Second from Commissioner Baker. Please vote. All votes have been cast, and the motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations. Welcome to Moreno Valley. Staff wrap-up.
The planning commission's action tonight is an appealable action. Anybody wishing to appeal would need to file a letter of appeal directly to the community development director with a fee and specific reasons for the appeal, and the appeal would be forwarded to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. The next case is PEN 18-0213. Applicant is SSC Enterprises LLC. Do we have a staff report?
Staff report will be presented by Associate Planner Julia Discota.
Good evening, Chair Barnes, and members of the planning commission. The item before you is a proposal for a 11,561 square foot distribution facility located at 11875 Pigeon Pass Road at Ironwood. The zoning in that commercial use is zone community commercial, which does allow the use. As was stated earlier, the, in 2007 and 2018, the city adopted, setting the regulations for the cannabis facilities. The applicant received their provisional license in August of 2018, and the conditional use permit was submitted in October of 2018. The conditional use, as it's presented to you tonight, is in conformance with the standards in Title IX that include a detailed security plan, and that includes the interior and the exterior, as well as security guards. It also includes the odor control plan that will have to be installed in the building. Okay, the proposed use is a distribution facility, and that's different from the retail facilities that you've already heard here this evening. This use allows for the procurement, sale, and transport of cannabis and cannabis products to licensed retail distributors. So they receive the product at this location, and then they go ahead and they package it up and get it ready for sale to other retail users. No public can come in and purchase the cannabis at this facility. You have to be a licensed retailer to do that. The floor plan, because of that, looks a little bit different than the retail uses. They have different rooms. They have the cannabis storage areas. They have some cure rooms, some packing rooms, vault rooms, and those types of things. This facility also has a roll-up door in the back where their vehicle will be able to be pulled in. The door closed down before any product is removed from the vehicle. The hours they're proposing are consistent with the city's municipal code, which is 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and that's also consistent with state law. I'll go back to this one. In this facility, there is a demising wall between the two uses. The next item that will be before you will be a retail facility. So you'll see that there's a demising wall in between the two of those, and there is one door that goes in from the facility to the dispensary intake room, and then also one into the security room. And those are the only two doors that are allowed in this, that will go from one room to the other. You will only be able to take product from the dispensary, no, the distribution facility to the dispensary. It cannot go the other way. And they'll have security at the door, and only certain people can go through that door. The security office, because the use will have the same security company, they'll use the same security room, and therefore there has to be access from both of the buildings to that. to that. The location is in an existing shopping center on Pigeon Pass and Ironwood, deliveries will take place through the roll-up door in the rear, and also the project is conditioned to replace the driveway apron at the driveway entrance on Ironwood, and install some new landscaping in the planters on the south side, uh, with some bollards at the southwest corner, uh, we're doing that to just add maybe a little bit more security in that, that parking area. There's no expansion of the existing building, so the, uh, footprint of the building is as it currently is today. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act for an existing facility. The surrounding area is, um, I thought, there we go, the surrounding area includes the community commercial zoning and the existing shopping center, and then to the north is R twenty existing multifamily, to the west, south, and east are existing single-family homes. To date, I have received one phone, or one letter regarding the project, you have that, it was provided to you this evening, and it's in opposition of the, the project. The property was noticed within three hundred feet to all residents and property, or to all property owners within three hundred feet, noticed on the site and noticed in the newspaper. And this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here to answer any specific questions you might have about the operations, or any other questions you might have, and staff is here as well. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
Um, I have one question, um, I don't see it in here, maybe I'm missing it, is there any crossover of employees from the dispensary to the distribution, like, one person called in sick, could they switch it over? I, I'm really confused about how those remain separate.
I will actually let the applicant address some of that, however, um, we're actually a little bit more concerned about the product going back and forth, the product from the dispensary, uh, from the distribution facility can go to the dispensary, but they cannot take any product, there's a track and trace system in, um, that they have to comply with, with the state as well, and so no product can go, once it gets to the dispensary, it can't go back for any reason. As far as letting employees go, um, generally, they wouldn't have the same employees due to, but I'm going to let them answer that specific question for you.
I have a question. Could you explain to me the differences in the locations that the various types of permits are acceptable within? In other words, can these, one, two, three, four, in other words, can these six cannabis uses all operate in a commercial zone, or light industrial zone, or, what are those restrictions for each of the different types?
For the, are you saying overall, or just this particular project?
Uh, overall, of, of the six categories, are there various, are there site locating restrictions for those categories that differentiate them from one another? Obviously, a dispensary is a, is a commercial activity, so makes sense that it be in a commercial center.
Right, dispensaries can be in the community commercial zone, neighborhood commercial, and business park mixed use. The testing facilities are only allowed within business park and business park mixed use, cultivation is business park and business park mixed use and light industrial, uh, manufacturing, business park, business park mixed, and light industrial, micro is community commercial and business park mixed, distribution is community commercial, neighborhood commercial, business park, business park mixed, and light industrial.
Okay, all right, that answers my question, thank you. Any other questions? Uh, would the applicant like to add anything?
I'm Brandon Rexrode, I'm the founder, I'd like to thank the commission for their time, and here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Harris?
Uh, yes, I, I'd like to know if, uh, at the back of the, um, distribution center, there's a laboratory preparation, is, is that where, are you going to be doing testing there?
No.
No.
No, that's just bathrooms for the employees.
Oh, it's, okay, 'cause there's another area that says bathrooms, there's, there's...
There's, there's a, there's a laboratory preparation for a product that is packaged that has to go out to lab for testing, but that would be off-site, that's not, that's third-party.
So, 'cause I was, I was wondering if this was actually going to be a, um, micro business.
No, it's not.
It's just two businesses.
Correct.
Thank you.
How many, um, different cities do you plan to distribute from this particular facility?
Um, different cities, it just depends who comes online, right now, we're probably just going to work on the inland empire, maybe a little bit of Orange County, uh, but in the future, it's, I would distribute to the entire state if the demand was there.
How many people are you going to employ?
Uh, we'll employ between, in this facility here, not counting the retail, this facility here, would be about twenty to twenty-five.
Will you be hiring local, or are you bringing in some of your own people?
All local, as much as we can do, hire local.
Any other questions? Apparently not, thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Uh, public comments?
Commissioner?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, me.
Trying to look at the question regarding the employees for, for cannabis, um, and if they can go between the two, um, different uses. Title Nine, which is what you're being asked to review, I don't believe we have any requirements in our Title Nine that talk about this sort of situation, but within Title Five, which is the business permitting process, which is what they have to, uh, secure in addition to the condition use permit, does have certain provisions with regard to employees, and the employees have to have certain identification, they'll have to carry that certain identification with them, um, and then, I'm reading those provisions, it, a little bit of a gray area to me if they can be an employee at both locations. One way I read it, it looks like they can only be an employee for one, but not both, but I'd have to look at that in a little more detail, but there are provisions in Title Five that are associated with the business permit, not the land use permit.
Are the employee certifications different, or something? In other words, would, if he worked in both, would he have to have both certifications?
That's what I, that's what I'm gathering from the requirements in Title Five, you have to identify who all your employees are going to be for each, so in the distribution business, or if there's an adjacent dispensary business, and there's a guy who works in both, they're going to have to qualify to be an employee in both, they're going to have to have an appropriate identification badge for both. I don't know how it applies.
Like the applicant may be able to add something to that, so...
Uh, my name's Kyle Turley, uh, one of the partners with the operation, as far as, uh, the companies are concerned, they would be two separate companies, so you have employees for the dispensary, employees for the distribution, they should never be, uh, intermingling. As far as security and consistency and transparency, it has to remain that way, there will not be an intermingling of employees from either business, uh, as both of these businesses are, uh, separate licenses, uh...
Okay, thank you. Hang on.
Since I really don't know much about the cannabis business, um, I was wondering, what kind of criteria do you have for an employee?
Uh, well, the, the employees will range from, uh, the basic, um, you know, service providers, to a CPA that, uh, you know, from about sixteen dollars an hour to two hundred thousand dollars a year.
But what I'm saying is, do they have to have some, like, knowledge of...
Of course.
Oh.
Yes, especially with, uh, Shango, uh, national branded company in multiple states, there's a criteria of, uh, qualification for each position that's already been established at these other, uh, facilities.
'Cause they have to know the product, right?
Sure, uh, they'll need to know the product, uh, you know, or be trained to understand it, uh, if they're new to the industry, and, um...
So there will be some sort of training if somebody doesn't know?
A hundred percent, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, uh, on the same line, it, well, do they have to have any certification for, or is just, they go through the training and that's, there's...
Certain, uh, occupations will require, uh, training, uh, you can be new to the job and have that initial training, but obviously, uh, in other areas of distribution, um, you know, making sure everything is managed correctly, uh, you want to definitely have your qualified people, uh, this is a business like anything else now at this point, uh, and so, we would definitely be adhering to, uh, qualified members, uh, for positions that would require it.
Right, well, if, if someone comes in and they're wanting medicinal uses, will the person behind the counter be able to ask questions about, you know, and get good advice from the person on the other side?
Well, per the laws, you know, and the state guidelines, obviously, we'll adhere to all those, um, and what we're allowed to provide in education, uh, of course, we will, that's the entire intent of, uh, you know, me really bringing, uh, Shango here and, uh, really reaching out to Brandon and the group to, to come here, um, you know, I'm from this area, I grew up here, moved to Moreno Valley when I was, you know, nineteen eighty-four, uh, and graduated from Valley View High School, went to Canyon Springs High School, all the other things, my mom was at Arnold Heights, uh, uh, school nurse at the base, um, and, uh, so, you know, in bringing this group here, uh, at the highest level, everything will be, uh, attended to. So for hiring, to, uh, qualifications, to training, um, you know, Shango Group is, uh, well-versed and experienced, uh, in this industry, and, uh, will most definitely provide Moreno Valley, uh, and Southern, with the, the, the best, uh, example of this in Southern California.
Okay, seems like the question that we're kind of trying to get at is, there's no state cannabis workers license, they're just employees, right?
The city does have our own, uh, employee identification certification, if you will, which does include a criminal background check that they have to pass.
There we go.
To be issued a, an ID card from the city, similar to other regulated businesses in the city, so, um, every employee that they want to bring on will have to also come to the city and get an ID card from the city.
Okay.
Which includes that.
Now, that, that ID is applicable to either business, there, the certification is the same?
No, it's specific to the, to the business.
But the qualification requirements are the same, so he could get both?
Theoretically, I suppose it might be possible under the city's, uh, permitting scheme to obtain two separate ID cards, um, I'd, we'd have to look into that, I, it's not contemplated, and as they, uh, there might be some state restrictions, and I think they want to avoid that complication, but our ID cards are issued specific to an employee, to a specific business. And although these businesses are affiliated or related, they are two distinct and separate businesses under our code, two distinct, separate business owners, um, I might think of it maybe as a franchisee, maybe as, they're using a common name, I think, um, or branding, but they are two completely distinct businesses.
All right.
So they're definitely distinct, and the provision I was reading in, in Title Five, again, Title Five is, is a regulation that's not subject to the planning commission's approval, I want to make sure that's clear, but it does say, an employee secures an, an employee identification card for a certain business, if that employee changes work to another company, then it, our, our code is saying that first one has to be rescinded or, or basically canceled out, so that they can get a new ID for the new business that they go to work for, they have to qualify for both. It doesn't appear to me, the way I read it, that you can be holding an employee card for both businesses.
Really?
And so, that's, that's, I, I don't know if it's been tested yet, I, this is obviously the first time it's come up, the gentleman who's, who's speaking sounds like they're going to have distinct employees at each business, doesn't sound like they're going to be crossing over, so it's probably not going to be an issue, uh, but, but we would look into it if we have to.
I have another question, um, I kind of find it fascinating, all this stuff, but, um, are you going to, like, when you do background checks, are you going to eliminate people that have had already criminal records, or something, or is it a state law, that do they go by the law where it says you can put down, you've had a prior, then you end up figuring out whether you're going to hire them or not?
Sure, uh, there's, um, um, obviously the state standards that have been established, but as, in this conversation, it is ever-changing, a lot of reparations are being made, a lot of legislations are being, um, you know, going, turning the clock back on some of these individuals, so we'll let the state continue to, you know, direct that, uh, but currently, there's no felons that, um, you know, can be officially, I guess, on the payroll, or, I don't, I don't know if there's, what the particular exactly is, uh, but pending, I guess, uh, the state regulations and where that's going.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, because it is a cannab-, I don't know, people think of cannabis, you know, you saw the other applicant had an issue with the illegal one, and, you know, so I was just wondering if there was more restrictions, because it is a, well, is it a controlled substance?
Well, this, this, the city's driving that bus on the license, so they're the one doing the background check and issuing the license.
Is that what they're doing for the employees?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, so you really don't have a big deal.
The city has to approve each employee permit.
Okay.
And can deny it for a felony conviction, any conviction of moral turpitude, or showing dishonesty.
Okay, that, that's where I was going with it, I just didn't know how they handled that. Okay, all right, not that any, you know, everybody makes a mistake.
If you recommend somebody who's headed to the city, get your license, and we'll hire you, if you can't get it, you're out of luck.
Well, again, yeah, a hundred percent, again, there's going to be a protocol, you guys have established, the city's established, you've worked very hard at this, and there's a, a very strict checklist, uh, with this business.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, any other, uh, questions? All right, let's, uh, move on to public comments then, uh, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback. Mr. Burgess?
Good evening once again, um, chair, vice chair, commissioners, staff, and residents and guests, think about it for a moment, each and one of us had to go through a background check just to be a commissioner, or, or serving the city, just to serve the city, we as residents got to go through back, background checks, you know, so, if we got to go through it, we know that we want them to go through it, for sure, especially when they're going to be handling cannabis, because cannabis is like money, it changes people, and we want to make sure that the people that are hired are not going to betray the city, because you know what happens when you have a friend that works in the inside, sometimes things come out on the outside, somehow, things happen, and that's why we're trying to avoid. You know, we don't want brothers and brothers working there, or sisters and sisters working there either, we want strangers working there that are going to obey the law. I know that we're going to try to hire twenty-five people in the city Moreno Valley, but we all want them to be background checked, and go through the, through the, through the thing through the city, and their own background, we don't want anybody to give us trouble, this is what I keep saying to you guys, you have the right and the power to bring them back if the laws are broken, you are the guide of the city, you are the gatekeepers of our city, you have the right to bring us back if they break the law, but they're promising you they're going to do everything right, and all we can do is hold them to their promise, but I guarantee you, as a resident, somebody that's fighting for progress, to keep people from using the needle and pills, I prefer them smoking marijuana, the least lethal one, I hold myself responsible to somebody in the city if they get hurt, this is why I'm tough, this is why I fought for the rules and the laws of our city, I don't care about nobody else, all I care about is Moreno Valley, this is important to us, that they keep the rules now, and they have to, regardless if it's eleven... And they have to, regardless if it's eleven thousand square foot, or the last one that was only thirteen hundred. They obey the same rules. Okay, now, two facilities, use red and use blue. What does red gotta do with blue? Nothing, get out of there, that's all it is. If it's the same ID, same thing, two color IDs, that's how simple it is for you not to be somewhere where you don't belong.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other speakers, will, uh, would the applicant like to, um, address any of the thing that you heard, just heard?
Hi Commissioners and, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for, uh, having us here tonight. Um, I'm our Director of Community Relations, uh, so my name's Joe Bresny. My whole job is to make sure that we are a good fit for the communities that we go into, and that we have someone who is on staff full-time, uh, to quickly mitigate any problems that we have. And we do that for two reasons, the first is we're, we're not bad people, uh, but the second is that, uh, if we, this is a new business, and it is a controversial business, and if we want our business to survive, um, long-term, we know that we have to adhere to these five words. Our policies protect the public, and we, we adhere to that very strictly, and if there's ever a deviation from that, I am the person that people can reach out to and call, and my job is to fix those issues quickly. So if there are people loitering, they can call me. If there is any kind of a security issue, your police will know my cellphone number and they can call me. And I do this for every jurisdiction that we're in, I'm on speed dial for the police if there's any problem. We've actually got it to a point now where the police in some of our jurisdictions are calling us because of issues with other operators, and they're saying, hey, can you call those guys down the street, because they're really making mistakes, and we can't get them to return our calls, and we wish they operated more like you. Um, so if you allow us into your community, my promise to you is we will set an example for all of the marijuana businesses in Moreno Valley to follow. We will lead, and we will make sure that there are no issues, and that if anything happens to pop up, it will be fixed quickly and correctly. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, with that, we'll close the public comments and debate. Do you have any comments?
Gotta say that, uh, they don't follow the rules, we'll do the same thing, we'll pull the permit and, you know.
Before we go, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we, they have to do, abide by the rules here, and, and we've set a high bar ourselves, so... No, this is a little different, though.
I'd, I'd like to put something out here that, it, I don't know whether it's an epiphany or not, that's a pretty strong word, I'm not that smart, but in listening to the presentation, it dawned on me, and which is what drove me to ask the question about the locations where a distribution facility can, can operate. This is in a commercial center, and it's a product distribution operation. They could be selling widgets or anything else, and the potential is that they're distributing to the entire state. And it kind of dawns on me that I would have a concern that they're running product in and out of this place in trucks to serve, who knows, you know, a hundred dispensaries from six in the morning till ten at night, and they're right next door to, um, residences, and it just seems like an activity, and I, and I have no problem with the, the activity itself, but it seems like this is better suited to a light industrial or a business parks setting. You're taking commercial space from a center and, and turning it into basically, uh, industrial, and so, I wanted to get that out there before we deliberated too deep into this, but, again, I have no issues with the operation itself, but in thinking about it, I have some concerns about the location, because it's not, uh, dispensary, it's distribution, so, all right. I wanted to get out there, get that out there early, so, Commissioner Harris?
Uh, yes, I, I was just thinking, in this, uh, area, this particular, um, store has been empty for a long time. In fact, both of them, there's a, a large open area, so I, you know, I think that we really, I'm not worried about them, I mean, they, they have over fifty cameras on just the, uh, distribution side, so, they seem like they're running...
Well, I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about the security or any of that, but the thought, it dawns on me, what if they're servicing five hundred dispensaries, so they're running a truck out of there every five minutes?
Yeah, but they have a time limit on it, right?
Yeah, so, uh, a truck out of that center every five minutes, from six to ten?
Well, I, I, I guess, we do like approving logistics projects in Moreno Valley, so, and, this is a, this looks like a mini logistics. I, I mean, but looking at the site, the, the floor plan, you know, they have a van, there's a pull-in van that brings product in and out, and so, I don't know, eleven thousand feet, it doesn't sound like this is gonna be a massive, uh, where you have, you know, a semi-truck type operation. You know, it's a van.
Well, not just that.
They're not refrigerators, they're little gummy bears, right?
Well, not just that, but there's only gonna be, what, twenty, twenty-five employees? I mean, how, and this, it's a slave place, you know, where they're, have them working around the clock, I mean, twenty, twenty employees can't really, I, I mean, it is nice that he's saying they're gonna do the whole world, but I, I, you know, the whole United States, I really don't think they're gonna do it out of this facility. I don't.
Well, and plus, if there's gonna be twenty dispensaries permitted in Moreno Valley, it has to have a distribution center.
Right, and it should be in a, uh, a light industrial or a business area.
Well, I, I mean, I, I guess, State of Brothers is in the same, same thing, and they come rolling in with all, probably all times of the night and day with their, uh, semi-trucks backing up to their, uh, thing. There's probably more than one truck a day that goes in there.
Right, but they're not servicing, you know, fifty other stores, they're just receiving product. Has there been any calculation as to the vehicle traffic that is, this is gonna generate?
Uh, we can check with the applicant to see what they're, um...
Could we do that, 'cause I don't even know how this distribution actually works. Be a little logistical lesson.
Yeah, now, what we have is we have two vans that will service the immediate area. When we, uh, expand to, uh, service more of the state, we'll have to expand to a bigger distribution center. This one will not service it.
You know, Jimmy Fallon would have a field day with these meetings. He would just... Good lord, okay. Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. I don't know. Anyway, uh, we digress, I, my apologies, all right. Any other comments?
That's what I was leading to when I asked how many, uh, different places were, what, to, to see the volume that would be going in and out of place, 'cause I would imagine, now, I guess my question would be, is the two vans, are they, um, just distribution, or they pick up in? Because your product has to come from somewhere, since you're not growing it there, so I guess you have to go somewhere and get, get your stuff and bring it in there and then send it out.
Yeah, so what we have to do is we're basically the link between the cultivators, the extractors, and then to the retailers. So we have to pick it up from cultivators and extractors, we bring it to the distribution. If it's cultivation product, we then have to send it out, have it lab-tested, then we have to prepackage it, and then we have to deliver it to the retailers, we have to collect the tax from the cultivation. We have to also collect the tax from the retail, distribution's the one that has the onus to report that up to the state. So, the distribution, this is the first model, I, I'm in multiple states, this is the first true distribution model. California's the first one to actually implement a true distribution model, kind of like liquor. Um, all these other states basically say, you know, hey, I'm gonna pay you a hundred dollars, can you drop my product off over at Jim's Dispensary? Um, there is no true distribution to it. So, with that, yes, we just, we'll be bringing product in, fulfilling it, lab-testing it, and then also delivering it out to retails.
So, individual, um, cultivators would not be bringing product to you, you have to actually go and pick it?
Correct.
Okay.
What comes to you, it goes out to the lab, it comes back, and then it goes to the distribu, uh, the dispensary?
Correct, so I pick it up, bring it to the distribution facility, then the lab comes in and does what they call a random sample of the product. They take it, pick it up, and test it, and then once it's approved, then I can package it, and then I can deliver it to retails.
Four trips for every gummy bear. All right. Sorry. It's my last meeting. All right. Seriously, uh, any other comments or observations? Well, I think it's time for a motion then. Someone like to advance that? If you'd like.
Hey, um, move that the Planning Commission hereby approves resolution, um, hope I'm on the right one, twenty nineteen dash twenty-two, is that correct?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay, so I'm on the wrong one. Sorry about that. No, let me...
You'll second the right motion?
It's just twenty-one, okay.
A second from, uh, Commissioner Sims. Please vote. All votes have been cast, motion carries six to one. Congratulations. Uh, do we have a staff rep up?
The Planning Commission's action tonight is an appealable action, any interested party would need to file an appeal in writing directed to the Community Development Director, uh, stating specific reasons for the appeal and accompanied by a fee. Um, any appeal would be then slated for a city council hearing, um, within this, a short time.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Case number four, PEN one-nine dash zero-zero-two-seven, the applicant is SMV Group Inc. Do we have a staff report?
Staff report will be presented by Julia Discota.
Good evening again, Chair Barnes and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you this evening is a five thousand six square foot cannabis dispensary located at one-one-eight-seven-five Pigeon Pass at Ironwood, in the community cur, commercial zone, which allows this use in this location. The proposed dispensary is, um, for retail sales only, for persons, uh, twenty-one years or older. The operating hours are from six AM to ten PM, per the city's, um, conditions of approval and consistent with state law. The city council adopted ordinances setting regulations for cannabis facilities in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. This applicant received their provisional license in January of two thousand nineteen and submitted their conditional use permit in January of two thousand nineteen as well. The conditional use permit as presented to you this evening is in conformance with the standards in Title Nine that include the detailed security plan and the odor control plan. The security plan provides for, um, security cameras within the building, as well as outside of the building, and, uh, security guards for the facility. Uh, the facility is similar to the other locations that, uh, the other projects that you've seen before with this type of a use, where the applicant, or the, um, users would have to come into the, the front doors and be checked in before they could move on through to the, uh, retail area. As I mentioned in the last staff report, there is a door that leads to the security room, and that is required by state law, um, for it to, um, house that, uh, security for both of the units, and there is a demising wall between the two uses, and we, as we've discussed, the, um, the employees and, and what they can and they can't do, they are two different, uh, two separate permits. Uh, one is for the dispensary and the other's for the retail, and so they do have to adhere to the rules and regulations for, um, their respective, um, businesses. This is, the properties, um, around the site include, um, oops, the R twenty at the north of the shopping center, as well as R five, which is single-family residential to the east, south, and west. There's no expansion of the existing building, parking for this facility will be, um, in the front of the building, and there is some on the side as well, on the south side of the building. The applicant will be required to, um, complete the improved landscaping as well as the bollards. Um, that condition of approval is on both of the projects, so in the event that the applicant chose to go through with one and not the other, the, um, the apron to the driveway and the landscaping would, is still required. They will have the opportunity to put a sign on the building, um, this is a representation of the building. However, the sign is not approved with this application, and will have to come through the regular sign requirements and follow the city ordinances. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Back, uh, Act as an existing facility, and at this time, the applicant and myself are here to answer any questions for you. Um, one more thing, I did get the same letter that I mentioned, um, in the last one, was presented for both of the, um, projects, and, um, they were not in support of the project, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Would the applicant like to come forward and add anything to that, uh, presentation?
Add, but if you guys have any questions?
I do have one here, um, one thing is not clear in my mind, after we get through with this here, does this have to go to city council, or what is the steps to get the thing doors opened on this thing?
We'd have to do, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We have to apply to the state, and the state's running a, a, a long lag, it could be six months, it could be eight...
Another six to eight months out or better.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
But once we get past with you, we will probably take the next step at that point and, and get going on construction.
Now, is this, when we approve this, is, is, are we approving this to the city council, or is this it?
No, this action would be approved tonight through you unless it's appealed.
Okay, got it, okay, and then that's it, okay, very good, thank you.
And that's true of all marijuana, uh, cannabis, uh, CUPs that are coming before you, they're all in the same position of being the final city approval that's necessary, but they all still will need state approval before they can open up.
And, I, I, I would like to add,
Pardon me.
I apologize, I, I would like to add, important to also note that, that the land use approval you grant doesn't give them, uh, building permit, uh, approval, so they still need to come in for any tenant improvements that they might have to do to the facility, that would require a building plan check. That could be done concurrently as they try and secure their permit through the state. So those are the, the, the final hurdles, so to speak, would be, uh, the state permit and the tenant improvements, all the way up to inspections and a certificate of occupancy, and that's when we would, uh, collect all of the fees that would be due. So the payment of all the fees.
Thank you, Rick.
I got one other question for the, uh, applicant. Now, like, when you have, that's a big facility, have you got something nailed down as far as a lease on that building, or is it tentative beyond getting a permit from the state?
No, I've been paying full lease on that building since June.
Commissioner Harris?
Hard to talk after hearing that. Um, the, uh, this shared, uh, security, um, office that is between, well, it's more on the dispensary side, it kind of looks like, but, um, or maybe it's at the back. Uh, how many, uh, security people will you have in there?
Or the retail only, or for...
Well, aren't they gonna be sharing?
They, they will, but what we run at our facilities is we run twenty-four hour security, so even when this facility's closed, there'll still be security on-site. We always have one person that monitors the cameras at all times, a security guard that's there, and then we'll have multiples, one in the front of the retail store, one on the floor, and then distribution will have its own as well. So there'll be probably, I would say, uh, between five and six guards there at all times.
Okay. Uh, they'll be monitoring all those cams that are all over the, I don't, you know, it seems that, there's a lot of cameras, I...
There are, but they trigger and you tell when there's movement, so they can see them, but they're on screens like these in our offices, I mean, where you have every camera, and they can literally call that camera right up immediately when there, when there's movement on it.
Somebody's in that area, the cam, it's gonna, okay, great.
It puts a red dot and, and does a, like a ring, so they can know what, what camera right to go to to call. It puts a red dot and does like a ring, so they can know what camera right to go to to call.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Though the two facilities are right next to each other, are they accessible on the inside to one another?
Only from the common door in the back for the secured storage and the Sallyport area that you see that is allowed by the state for the common area. I think she had it on one of the pictures here. Right in the back there on that back left corner of.
Okay, so then you're.
What it allows us to do is it allows us to bring products, since we're a distributor. We come in through the distribution and it'll allow us to bring, just like any other retail, if I was servicing another retail distributor, I'd be able to go into that retail. It allows me to bring the product from my distribution into my retail.
Through the inside?
Correct.
Looking for a clarification, I'm sorry. You were talking about the access through the port in the back at the security area. But there is another access, a door between the distribution and the dispensary through the middle demising wall. If you go from the front of the building, back through that first hallway, there is a man door there.
It goes from the hallway from the distribution facility into the dispensary. And that's so that the product can go directly into the dispensary intake room.
Correct.
And they can determine how they're going to put it on the shelf. It eliminates them from having to take the product outside and around.
So then dispensary employees are, again, that takes us back to they're completely distinguishable between the retail employees and the distribution employees.
Yeah, everything's key-carded, so their key card wouldn't, it's like your guys' door. If I had a key card, theirs isn't going to open anything that goes from one to the other. Their access will be granted to the facility that they're working in.
Any other questions to the applicant? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, do we have any public speakers? I bet we do. Mr. Ruggeras.
It's your last night. Commissioners, just remember, the CUP. You have the right to challenge any business owner if they break the rules. Keep that in mind. If a complaint comes to you, you have the right to revoke their license in the city of Moreno Valley. Just remember that and we'll be safe. Thank you.
Wow, that's a record. Thanks Raphael. All right, with that, we'll close the public comments and deliberate. Any deliberations?
Well, I just think that the security itself, I mean, he's going to be watching him like a hawk. I would too, if I was in that business. And so I just, I just, you know, there's no reason except for like the comment you did make and it was a viable one. You know, it kind of made me think about it too. But the facility itself is not big enough to, I know he's got huge ambitions and I'm sure he'll do them. But that little facility isn't going to distribute that, you know, that much. But I just, you know, with the way the city's doing this, they're doing it right. And I believe that, you know, we do have the option if somebody doesn't do the right thing to revoke the CUP, the conditional use permit.
It is highly regulated.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
It's new to us, so we'll see how it flushes out, but we won't know until we try it. So, a joke? At any rate, we won't know it until we try it. Yeah, we don't, boom. All right. Yeah. Like I said, Jimmy Fallon would just have a field day. All right. Any other? Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion that the Planning Commission approved Resolution 2019-22. Is that the right one?
Yep, you're right.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Stephen. Please vote. All votes have been cast. Motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations. Is there a staff wrap-up?
Yes, Planning Commission's action tonight is an appealable action. Any interested party that would wish to appeal must do so in writing, directing it towards the Community Development Director, state the specific reasons for the appeal and file the appropriate fee. If an appeal is filed, it will be adjourned for a public hearing before the city council.
Thank you. Other commission business, there does not appear to be any? Any staff comments?
One last, thank you. Thank you very much, Chair Barnes, we'll miss you.
Oh, thank you. And IU, Planning Commissioner comments?
I have one. Best wishes on everything that you do going forward and thank you for serving. I enjoyed it.
Thanks very much. Anybody else?
Same thing. Best wishes to you. Learned a lot from you. You always seem to find something deep down in there. Where did he find that?
Special thanks to the staff. I really appreciate you helping me through all the stumbles that I have come upon as I try and lead these meetings. So you guys have all been great. I really appreciate it. I've enjoyed the process. Thank you, guys. It's been a real pleasure and best of luck for you that are sticking around and I'll come back and see you. I'm not moving out of the city for a while. And with that, it's the first time I've used this. We're adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting on April 11th, 7:00 p.m. here in these chambers. Good night, everyone.